I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, any adjustments to the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
And question was so again, any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment, is there anyone here to speak to public comments? Okay, we'll have to do a list and have you all, just kidding, there's nobody here again. Alright, I guess pleading to the camera doesn't work, so. Incent agenda, would anyone like to pull any items from this long list of consent items? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Okay. They both be a very sorry.
No problem.
Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
And motion passes. Sheriff Eliasen.
Good morning.
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 So I'm here to talk about our squad car cameras. The current cameras that we have, excuse me, have become obsolete. So if any part of them breaks or goes bad, they can never be fixed again, they just have to be trashed. Our, we have viewing software, so when the squad cameras are full or we need evidence from them, we have memory cards, we take the memory card out, we put it in the computer in the office, and the viewing software downloads everything, you can watch it, or turn the DVDs for the county attorney or defense attorneys or whoever may need them. Our viewing software, the licensing was never kept up on that. So that has become a problem as well, and to purchase the licenses for that software again, it was actually, the cost was actually more than what it costs to replace the entire system. So we have Stonegarden funds in an amount of $39,000. I have a $30,000 capital request from this year's budget for this purpose. The new system, 10 cameras, the viewing software, servers, everything that we need, and this has all been run through IT, Kevin and Rena, they helped out with this quote, comes to $61,900. So we have $69,000 set aside, so the rest, the remainder of that money would be used for installation purposes.
We will start with discussion, Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, this time of year, when I look at a request, I always go right to the bottom, has this been budgeted? Yes, it has been, so, yes, it's certainly important to update things, and if it, cost wise, is better to redo the whole thing, then you're right on that you have searched that and looks good.
Commissioner Gable?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Pat, and also Rena for working with him, and it's important that we have that technical side when we're evaluating equipment like this. I guess my question would be have, but do you know what the, how many years of service we got out of the system in place, and what the projected is? I mean, with technology, when we're talking about laptops and other equipment, stuff like that, it's like we should anticipate and build in so that we're accumulating funds. We do that in some cases, like with our coffee revenue and our automobile mileage revenue, it takes like, so that we have a funding mechanism, so that we are budgeted for these things. But my question, do you know the life cycle?
I'd, if I had to guess, I'd say that this current system we've had probably close to 10 years now. And I don't know as far, I'm gonna let Rena answer the projected timeline.
This, this system will work fundamentally different than the other one. This one will allow them to upload wirelessly, rather than all the monkeying around with little disks and that sort of thing, when they drive into the Sally Porter even from Park House side, and it'll be an encrypted message, so that will go onto a server that then can be accessed from the internet, other than before there was a dedicated PC there. So server replacements, every five years maybe? And a server is generally three, four thousand dollars. So I'm not sure what the ongoing maintenance costs are, or to keep this up. But the other technical aspect of this are the cameras themselves, which go on the squad cameras.
And there's the hardware and the software, as you are aware, and it just anticipating, when we make decisions like this, in the past, we've usually asked the question, do we know, are we, how close are we with the changing nature of technology to being at the new level? So we make this purchase, we can get more years of service out of it. So if, if we're taking good care of the hardware side of it, and it has better application to the software side, as to why we didn't maintain, you know, the software in the other one, our decision to make this was both a hardware assessment and the new technology.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple questions, one, so there's no state database that you're gonna have to enter any information into or anything repeatedly?
Yeah. I can't, I can't always answer that in future.
Not currently. And Rena, this will be more of a question for you, I think. Servicing the equipment, guessing this is work that we can do internally?
You know.
You don't anticipate any additional maintenance needs?
I'm not sure, I think that actually they do that, right?
They'll do that.
As part of the service agreement.
Yes.
Oh, they'll do that, so your staff won't be?
The only piece that we would probably find ourselves needing to be involved with is probably the wireless router, if for some reason that wasn't functioning and needed to be reset. But generally speaking, should be pretty reliable.
Minimal.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Commissioner Seabirdson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And my only question goes along with what the questions have already been asked, is just that technological advancement and so forth, and I'm sure Rena will get all the research from it. But there's no?
Actually Kevin did.
Okay, so there's no cloud-based system coming out, like, you know, the iTender?
No, this, this is truly, really, you think about it, you have the camera in there, and it's, it's got a wireless component to it, so when they get close to the server, you know, outside of there, it, it'll do a rather automatic upload of the data on there to the server.
Okay, so it needs to have that physical?
No, it's in the air somewhere, but it will be encrypted, because this is, this can be CEGIS material, so it will be an encrypted signal between the squad cars and the server.
So it's going to be sophisticated and needs that?
It's, it's, it's the most current technology that's available. I'm not saying 10 years from now there won't be something else.
Or even two years. Or a year and a half. Can't know. Okay. So, and we need it, obviously, we need it, and we can't afford a breakdown, and if we haven't kept up the licensing, there's that aspect, so I'm just going to make a motion to approve the purchase of 10 new in-squad cameras and viewing software in place of system units.
Can we get a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion carries?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Molly?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just asking the commissioners to authorize the county attorney to execute this grant agreement. This is the Office of Justice Programs, or OJP, grant that funds a portion of Leah Ekstrom's job, the crime victim coordinator portion. I see one error on the proposed resolution. In paragraph two, it states Cook County Attorney's Office is hereby authorized to execute, it should say Cook County Attorney. So I'd like to ask for a motion to authorize execution of the resolution as amended to Cook County Attorney is authorized to execute such agreements and amendments.
Okay. Commissioner Seabirdson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have no questions. I'm not very much in favor of this.
Commissioner Moore?
Support as well, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Gable?
Support.
Commissioner Storley?
Support.
Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the resolution with the proposed amendment, authorizing the Cook County Attorney to enter in the cooperative agreement. You can read the whole thing, but the Office of Justice Programs, the Minnesota Department's taking support.
Commissioner Gable, second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Molly. Rena?
Good morning again. You may recall, last year during the budget process, that we had discussed the project to basically take the AS400, which is a mid-frame IBM piece of hardware, which is very complicated to support, and change over to a hosted solution with Emsys. And we had put money in the budget for that last year, I believe we, I think we put $25,000 or something like that. It took Emsys most of the year to kind of put that together. There are eight counties involved with it, who will be coming onto that hosted solution over the next three years. What Emsys will be doing is buying the AS400s themselves. They will be buying, they will be buying two sets of them. So everything that we have will be backed up at another location. So we will have, in this process, disaster recovery that we don't currently have. We would be restoring today off of backup tapes, which hopefully are, you know, accurate. So if we didn't do this, we will be due to buy a new one in March, and they're somewhere $35,000 to $40,000 ourselves. So the $21,000 one-time costs are budgeted this year, and we would go ahead, this, this is basically, what you have in front of you is basically a service level agreement and a commitment to kind of move forward and post them. As I mentioned, eight counties are doing this right now as well. That authorizes Emsys to go ahead and spend the money to start buying that hardware and setting it up. Earlier this year, we transitioned part of our support to them. They actually support our stuff now remotely, they do all the updates and that sort of thing. I thought it was a good test for us to find out how that service would work. I, I would think, and Brady can maybe speak to this, or members of his office, I think we're getting much better support than we were able to support it ourselves. The upgrades happen within five minutes, and when they come out, we get an email that says, "Cook County's updated." Before, sometimes it would, you know, take a couple of days or even a week for my staff to get to. It's a high level of expertise to run these systems, I think it's a very smart thing for us to do. The actual costs for us, once, once you take out replacement of equipment, are probably an additional six to nine thousand a year extra than what it costs us to do it. And if, like I said, it's redundant, they'll, they'll have it both at Itasca County and Carlton County, so everything will be fully backed up, which is a great feature for us. These are all of our financial systems, as well as some of the systems that are used by the highway department for their cost allocation and other things. And they will manage all of that for us. So I encourage you to approve this, I think it's, the discussion came up when Amy Look was retiring last year, because she did about half of the work on it, and Kevin did the other part. With Amy's retirement, we didn't have a good way to replace that skill set. These are very highly specific kinds of skill sets, very difficult, takes many years to learn it if you don't have the skill set. And even though I do not have a retirement date from Kevin, that's, you know, it's not many years in the future, so it's a, I think it's a smart move for us. And obviously, other counties are doing it as well. So, any questions?
Commissioner Storley?
Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't really have any question, other than it sounds like you're moving forward with the technology that you need to, and that's important, because it changes probably every hour. So thank, so thank you for doing that.
Commissioner Gable?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rena, the, you mentioned that you anticipated it'd be $6,000 to $8,000 more than our costs for us to do that. I guess my question would be that, in hard costs compared to soft costs, because we are having to do it, so when you look at time involved, and you look at the amount of time that the updates are happening now, we're getting better efficiencies, and it's not involving our staff time, so there's a hidden cost that we aren't calculating relative to that cost.
The $6,000 to $8,000 actually includes a lot of that. The Emsys, they did a really incredible job of looking at sort of the cost ownership and business stuff, so they included a lot of indirect costs, like the cost of electricity to run that, that particular thing, they included estimated staff times across counties. We also pay, I, I won't get to an accurate number here, but it's around $4,000, $5,000 a year to IBM for maintenance costs in addition to all of this. So they added all of that together with level of support that your county was looking for, and it was, it ranged different for different counties. I can get you that information if you want, so spreadsheet of?
Generally recognizing it's, from a financial standpoint, as well as the service provided. And my next question, maybe it was identified in the literature, but what level of maintenance are we signing up for?
We're signing up for the, actually, the highest one. So they will do everything. They'll even, they will even do the upgrades and the support for, for the other software that's on there, like for the highway department, that isn't theirs too. They have an IBM, a couple of, oh, well, that's, they're, they're an IBM shop. So they, the one person who's in charge of this, it has an exceptional level of skills, so we will get very good service.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rena, so there's an addition, there's a $9,000, and we argue it's not additional, it's in place of expenses incurred elsewhere. Would that be carried then on your budget annually going forward?
Yes.
And again, this is, we're putting in budget time, is this, this is an indirect offset elsewhere and not a direct offset?
So our, our cost for this service every year, once we'll pay this one-time cost, and our cost for next year is, and it's in my budget, is $15,250 or something like that. It's already in my budget. And that will be the maintenance cost for next year, for them to maintain the system and do all the support on there. So. So that's, that gives you an idea, it's already in my budget for next year.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seabirdson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in summary, $21,000 upfront and $9,000 increasing for the service.
Well, I, I just want to give you an idea that our, our, our hard costs are going down, but our, our annual costs, starting next year?
Will go down.
Will be $15,000.
Oh, okay.
For, for the support. But what I'm saying is, that's really not a lot more than what it actually costs us to do that in-house with a customer.
Got it.
But we are paying for service if somebody else is doing that.
Yeah. At a high level.
At a very high level. Much higher than we have.
Right. And we don't have to replace the old machine for?
No, and, and built into those costs are the replacement that they would do. But we'll be doing that with other, other, right now, we're such a small county, we have this big box that we use about 20% of. So now, there will be three counties on one of those boxes, so the collective cost of ownership goes down. And so built into that $15,000 a year is also the replacement. But not the replacement just one box, but a backup box as well, which we currently aren't doing. Is that helpful?
Yeah, really helpful. And so why only eight counties?
Well.
Because they, their systems are still?
Emsys doesn't have a lot more counties than that.
Really?
I think Emsys has 13 counties maybe?
Okay.
So these are the first eight counties that, one of the counties is St. Louis County, and that's not one of the eight. I think they have the resources to be able to do that. The other kinds of counties that are looking at this are Itasca, Cooch, Cass, Carlton, smaller counties like ourselves, we can't get a hold of these resources.
Right. Seems like a really good solution.
It is. I'm really, I'm really quite grateful to Emsys for taking this on.
Other counties may not have their returns yet.
And there we go, they have, yeah, they're in there, yeah. Yeah, wow. So I would make the motion to approve the hosting service agreement with Minnesota County's Information Systems, Emsys, allowing them to move ahead with creating a machine there.
Support.
Commissioner Gable, you want your hand up?
Yes, just, I was gonna make a motion, she made it.
Sorry. Good motion, second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we waiting for Steve, or are you gonna be Steve?
I am not Steve Orton. I'm sitting. Some days maybe you wish you were. Not as knowledgeable, but maybe better looking than.
So the better-looking Steve Orton is here?
Less knowledgeable, though. Starting to fire me.
Go ahead, Rodney.
Well, I think what you have before you is just Maple Hill Fire Department's request to allow an audit, so that PARA can look at, at what it takes us to join their system. Currently, we do it all ourselves. Dick Parker helped us with it, but as you know, he passed, then Steve stepped up to help us through for now, and then within the department, we had a lot of discussion whether to continue to have us do it internally ourselves, or whether to look for outside sources such as PARA. It's our understanding there are other departments on it, so we were doing an education process to our, for ourselves, just to find out if it's something we wanted to do. I understand we're at the phase where we have to allow them to audit our books to see if they can let us join. So I believe that's what you're approving today, is to allow that process to happen.
Madam Chair, yeah, Steve's letter was that they're actually seeking approval from the commissioners to join PERA, and then the cost analysis will begin, so.
Yeah.
I mean, they may not accept that for some reason.
Right, they may not accept us, and they may not want you.
Right. So you won't be coming before us again, this is, this is, for our purposes, this is conclusion? Yeah, okay.
There's at least, I didn't bring a list, but there's at least four local departments that are on the state system right now. I think Colville's on there.
That was gonna be my question to you, was you may educate us to, is what you feel is a benefit or not?
It, I mean, they push small departments to go to fire often, because they know they make more money for their fiber relief associations. Most of them do, unless they're large enough to have that kind of financial analysis of investment funds, so most of them do much better on the state. I know they encourage, they do have to make some changes. They'll have to decide whether to maintain a general fund, you may not need to if, because you may have a fire department, this is the relief association, so the fire department itself may have a fund to handle levy amounts and other things, but basically, their whole investment function goes away, they don't make the payments to the individuals who are running that, and the state takes what they want. An association, basically.
As a department, as a member of the department, when Dick Parker took care of it, that was easy for us, just to let him handle it, because he did such a good job at it. Now, in this current state, we don't, we, there's nobody on the department that has his expertise, so we were looking to make the volunteers' lives easier, to not have to handle this, rather than just be firefighters, so. So Steve Orton actually brought it up to us, that maybe this would be a good fit for us.
Well, besides losing Dick Parker, Ellen already turned.
Yes.
You gotta double it.
Yeah. Correct. And, and nobody in the department wants to fill either of those shoes.
No. Can we all start with discussion, Commissioner Seabirdson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It seems like, I mean, this is what you've decided you wanted to do, and it makes sense, so I really have no questions, I'm just gonna approve it.
Commissioner Moore?
The other departments who have done the same are happy with it, so I don't see?
It's our understanding there, and, and that's why I might pose a question to maybe Brady, if you see problems that maybe they didn't foresee.
No, I haven't heard any difficulties, and I think, when I see the reports come through, they're, their earnings are, they're doing well, they're, they're in there with everybody else. I think most of them around the state are joining this now.
Okay. That was our understanding.
I wish we could join it as a county, because they have, they have access to things we don't.
Commissioner Gable?
Thank you, Madam Chair, there's your testimony.
There you go.
Commissioner Storley?
I have no discussion with it, I think it sounds good, so I'll make a motion. That the request by the Maple Hill Fire Department Relief Association, join the statewide investment plan administered by the Public Employees Retirement Association.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brady?
The post's machine is failing, actually several times in the last few months, and I need to lease, is the, is the way we've gone in the last many years. And I had Kevin research a little bit, and he also agrees that the stay on lease is the best method, so I think it's in your packet, the one we're proposing. It's very similar, but there, there is no lower price that gets us all of the functions that we need, so it's a little bit higher than what we're spending now, but I did put old account information, it's very similar to what we were paying back in 2018, and so it's back up to about $2,400 a year. What's in here is a proposal for the DM475 mail system, at a lease rate of $265.02 a month, but I'd like to amend that to $229.05. We did a little research, and we don't need the higher accounting function, we only actually use it, so $229.05 is the level of service that we need, and that'll be about $2,500 a month, and that's, the larger numbers are going to be built into the 2017 budgets, I make that a slight reduction. Oh, thank you. I mean, it'll have no effect on the percentage.
Any further discussion, Commissioner Storley?
Looks like a big machine, is this the same style of machine?
Essentially, yeah. It just has more functionality.
Looks like it would take a huge mailer, and we could, most sizes that you use to send things out in would fit this machine.
Yeah. The main thing is, is it's reliable, it won't break down when we especially need it. And it's in the 2017 budget, so the request here is to do it now. We have some big mailings going up, including our ballots, TNT notices, so we'd like to start that rate now, it's a few dollars, maybe a couple hundred dollars extra this year.
Thank you. We don't have to build any cubicles more, do we?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Gable?
Brady's supporting.
Commissioner Moore?
No questions?
Commissioner Seabirdson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, ready to support, make the motion unless somebody else wants to. I'll make the motion to approve the DM475 mail system proposal at $229.05 a month.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Jack? No pressure or anything, we might not be hungry, but. There's apples.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a, the first five items, I think, are, moved in pretty quickly, so.
Now you adjusted.
I'm sorry?
You adjusted.
I'm sorry, did I say that? The first one is to requesting that the board approve a memorandum of understanding, amending the contract that the county has with the law enforcement labor group. During our negotiations, we were talking about the development of a lead dispatch position. They were aware of the, of the development of the lead dispatch position, and put in the contract, a re opener, for us to evaluate that position, if we actually decided to fill that position. So this is simply satisfying the, the agreement and the contract that we would do that. It is, the position was, was approved, they agreed with the classification of C412. Basically, they were concerned with the salary range of the position, and they were satisfied that the classification, the salary range were satisfactory, given the job description that was also reviewed by them. So they have already signed off on this memorandum of understanding, I'm just asking that, ideas board chair has authority to sign up on that.
Okay, discussion, Commissioner Seabirdson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm in favor, there's no questions.
Commissioner Moore?
Thank you. So just to be clear, we're not hiring somebody, this is, so that our contract allows us to do that?
Yes, thank you for the question. No, we're not hiring somebody, we've already approved that hiring.
Correct.
And, and having, having done that, then, this is just going back, amending the contract to make. to make sure that both parties have a chance to review the job description and the classification of the job. So in the next contract, this will be added as a, as a job on the list of jobs within that bargaining unit. So.
Commissioner Gable?
Just, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment to say that things that get identified in the union negotiations to make sure that our contract is updated and current is, and this is one of those housekeeping things that we need to do. So I'd certainly support it.
Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ready to support.
Make the motion. Mr. Gable?
Motion that the board approve the memorandum of understanding that will surveys an amendment to the current LES contract establishing the position of lead dispatch public safety system specialist as a new position within the bargaining unit and sets the classification of the position of C41-2.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes.
The next item is the approval of the renewal for the health insurance plan based on the contract that we have for 2016, 2017 and the fact that we, our history has been that we renewed the current CD HP831 plan. That's the, that's, that's the request that I'm making is that the, is the board authorize that renewal.
Can we all start with discussion? Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is this a renewal that will be looked into then in a couple of years for another?
Yes. Thank you for that question. And an update for people who have not been involved in that conversation. We've established a benefits review committee and we are looking at alternative plan options and alternative providers. All considerations will be made for, and available for negotiation in the 2018 and later contracts. So during our bargaining with the 49er group, they said, "We have a health plan that you should take a look at and consider." We've asked for those materials. I've talked with other administrators in other counties and they have had to make decisions like this and take a look, inform committees and work with agents to try to come up with lower cost solutions or, you know, changing, changing the ratio between what the employee pays and what the employer pays. So all of those things will be on the board and discussed by this benefits committee for new information to take in, take place starting in 2018.
And that'll be starting sometime next year?
We've already started. The committee has already started meeting. We have another meeting on Wednesday this week.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Gable?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's pretty apparent when we go to budget that this particular line item is a, is a line item that's significant. And we've seen how volatile it's been. And that obviously means that we have a responsibility to, to make sure and prove that we are getting the benefits that, that we desire at a cost that's affordable. And I know organizations that have been with a provider for multiple years, but every year they just go through the discipline of sending it out to make sure that they are proving that in fact they're getting the best rate that they can for the identified services they provide. So I, I look forward to having that inter review so we can monitor this because it's a huge impact as we see.
Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff, I mean, it's a sticker shock, obviously, and it's slightly less of a sticker shock than it was initially. Have there been, have you done preliminary research on other plans as to the potential reduction in costs for the overall plan? And still, 20%, you know, increases is pretty dramatic and that puts pressure on both the levy, the property taxes going up, and on the other services that, that we're struggling to provide for people.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Commissioner Moore. To provide a little bit of context, our increase this year was significant. But our rates for 2017 still put us in the median of people that we would compare ourselves to other, other counties. The city of Grammeray got a smaller increase this year, but their rates are actually still higher than ours. So from a context perspective, last year I did a survey of all of the seven counties in our, in our region. And we were below the median for all of those counties. So I'm assuming when I do that again this year that we're gonna end up being somewhere below or at the median for that. So I know sticker shock, a $300,000 increase for this line item is, is significant. I'm not saying that it's not. But to place it in the context of what's happening within that industry to all the players and county agencies, we're not that different. To your exact question about options that we have available to us, I, I've got 10 alternate plans that Blue Cross represents as, as being alternatives to us. And if we didn't have a contract with our, with our unions, I would be representing all of these options to you for considerations for 2017. These are the basis point for us to have. Our, our first meeting with the benefits review committee was with David Kuschel, a representative from Blue Cross Blue Shield, to talk about the types of features that are, that are available and differentiate those optional plans from the plans that we have so that we can have, we can have a good conversation, good discussion about what features are most important to people, what features are part of the basic benefit that we're providing and what features are that other, that people might want to purchase above and beyond what, what counties provide. We do have a large enough group that we could potentially offer more than one plan, although there are disadvantages to doing that as well. What you usually end up having then is your, is your high users all form into this little tiny group of using the high use plan and it still drives up costs for the whole group. So, but there are, of the 10 plans, I see decreases, the option of decreasing from the 2016 rate to 2017 of 3, 7, 11%. 13%, we could have a 13% reduction by changing almost all of the factors, which means, you know, that would be increasing the deductible, changing the prescription benefits, not carrying a fourth quarter embedded deductible option. So there's, there's lots of options that are available to us. So I believe by starting the conversation now, we do have an opportunity to mitigate these costs in the future.
Thank you, Jeff, Madam Chair. But there's no other provider in this marketplace other than Blue Cross?
Oh, there are other providers. We'll look at those as well. But for right now, I don't have numbers for them because we didn't go through that process this year.
And then the last question I have is, so is this specific plan through Blue Cross specified in our contracts?
Yes, it is.
That was part of the agreement for them to contribute to the plan? Was that unchanged for the first year?
Madam Chair, in all actuality, the agreement for the plan was that the, their contribution to the plan would not change in 2016 and 2017. This plan had been specified for a number of years prior to my arrival here. It is just, it has just been approved as part of the process. And I don't know exactly how long this group has been on that plan. This plan is, is by far and large the most popular plan that Blue Cross provides to government agencies or something very, very similar to this plan.
We're not the only one getting hit with this in the home either. I didn't see this was discussed. We're not alone. Not that that makes it better or right, but. We're all on the sinking ship together. Yep. Sorry. I see if Frank is done. He's still contemplating.
No, no, I just, you know.
Poop has changed all of them.
I get crap in my hands up too often, you know? So, and you expect it to do it here too.
You didn't know what you signed up for. Commissioner Seabird's up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you to Jeff for getting this review committee together. I'm assuming that came from Jeff and the benefits review committee. Who's on the benefits review committee? And I just want to thank whoever that is.
Yeah, we followed a similar process. What I did is I said, "We need to do this."
Yeah.
And asked Judy to contact the bargaining units and then representatives of the non-represented groups.
Okay.
And so they have selected the people they want to be attending this going forward.
Oh, good.
So, and at our first meeting, we had, and we also made it open. So there were people who weren't selected who just wanted more information that also showed up. So I believe this is gonna be well attended. There's a lot of apprehension. There's a lot of fear that, that what we're doing is just looking at ways to reduce benefits. And right now, the conversation is simply to talk about the options that are out there and the costs that go with each one of the options. So that.
Empower people.
So that when we get to the point of negotiating contracts again, we can negotiate all, all aspects of the contracts.
That's great.
Is our board leadership on that as well?
At this point? At this point, no. At the point that we're negotiating contracts, there will be board leadership on that.
But in determining what those benefits are, there's no board input?
We're not determining any benefits. We're just reviewing options.
Right.
Commissioner Gable?
Yeah, this, this is a, as I said previously, this is a huge thing. I mean, that translates to 4.5% of our levy this increase this year. 4.5. Some counties are levying at 4.5 or under. And I, I know in my own, you know, professional experience that this issue, as I'd see 18% increases of whatever, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and then employees who felt that the plan, because of the deductible and whatever, that it wasn't giving what they want. And then we could go to cafeteria plans that gave them more selection as to benefit and health savings accounts. And so evaluating all of that, able to come up with something that was more manageable as a cost and was more beneficial to employees as to the nature of the plan. But that's a constant assessment, you know, in today's climate. The other thing is, is that when other counties have looked at this, and I've mentioned, you know, Aiken County looked at it and their board was very pleased with the administrators' work on this and it reduced the overall cost thousands of dollars and it reduced the cost to the employee as far as their participation. And the plan offered, you know, no declining level of benefits. So everybody's very proud of that. This year, Blue Cross Blue Shield came through with a over 50% increase in their plan and they had to scrap it and go where we are. In other words.
Commissioner, I would offer two comments on that. That's great to throw those numbers out, but their plan cost twice what our plan did two years ago. So when they reduced theirs by 50%, they came down to the cost of what our plan was. They were transferring half of that cost, i.e. the full cost of our plan, to the employees and the employee share. And then the plan that they went to was a non-conforming plan and they had to go to something else because of the plan they found themselves in was going to end up costing them in penalties.
So they can keep their levy low because the burden of the cost is on the employee?
Well, that's one component of it.
That's, that's a big component of that. They were at the top of the list of comparables. And, and, and so, I mean, there's more of that story to tell. If I look at, if I look at Pine County, Pine County's operating, offering almost exactly the same plan that we are, but the employee share is higher. The, the premium that we have, the increase that we have this year is significant. Our ability to handle the $300,000 change in line item is not, we don't have that. Other, other counties have the capacity to handle that. We don't have that anymore. And that's why this is a bigger issue for us. Our premium cost is in line with what other people are paying. And I'm not saying that we don't need to look at options. I'm saying that we've already started looking at options and that reviewing those options is, is a part of what the Human Resource Office needs to be doing.
Well, in Pine County's 2015, we had the discussion of where their levy was at and they had 110% in their fund balance. So they're in a whole different world.
And my only point is that numbers need context to be very useful. And, and the example of, of what Aiken County did to save money was they were in a really bad spot. They had to do something. And what they ended up doing is something that hopefully doesn't end up costing them money down the road. Those actually still could if somebody were to have a claim in that period of time. They may be held liable for the, for the additional cost of that claim.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and my point would just underscore the importance of staying on top of an item that impacts, in our case, you know, over 4% of our, of our levy.
Exactly.
And, and while they worked very hard to do that and they come with a decision that the board affirmed, the very next year they got nailed. And so that's why, you know, in any of these things, we, we talk about, you know, our auto home costs every, every time. So we just need to stay up on top of those items that have such a big impact.
I anticipate the benefits committee being a standing, standing review committee.
Commissioner Storley? Andrew Clowen. Can I get a motion? Oh, Mr. Moore?
No, Madam Chair, I don't have a motion. I do have another point to make, though. I, we have added staff members to our personnel committee and I think for good reason. They've requested to be involved in those decisions from the, from the beginning, from the conception of them, you know, to, to bring things to our attention that we need to see in order to make good decisions. To have a benefits committee without representatives of the board and then ultimately just to vote on, vote on the concluding decision of that committee without being involved at the inception, I think, is, is a problem. And I would encourage this board to, to ask for representation or to, by resolution, to, to move resolution or to move representation onto the benefits committee. And personally, I don't see how I could support things coming from that committee without our input.
I agree with that.
Madam Chair, I would ask that I have the opportunity to research other benefits committees because one of the reasons that you end up getting open conversation is because you don't have elected officials in this group. I don't attend this group. This is facilitated, this is, this is using the professionals that are available to provide options, to provide services, to hold conversations, not to make decisions. Not even, not even to provide options, but to educate the staff. And that's the point of this. The point of, of coming up with options that we could use in, in negotiating contracts is of course the responsibility of the, of the negotiating committee. But I would ask that I have an opportunity to review what best practices are related to benefits committees, staff benefits committees before we take a vote on.
Could you put that on a future agenda, please?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you. I need a motion for the approval of the annual health insurance renewal.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we not approve the annual renewal of the CDHP831 health plan with the Northwest Service Cooperative Pool.
So motions to not approve? Do I have a second on that motion? Do I have a second? End of call. There's no second on that motion. Commissioner Gable?
Just, I have a comment. Commissioner Moore, I, I understand, you know, the motions and the, the intents and where you're coming from on, on things that have been discussed today in, in both of our, our meetings. We have, we have a responsibility as being part of the bargaining, you know, group to comply with these requirements. If we have no option on the board, I guess I would ask, you know, our administrator, with the timeline we have needing to have a contract renewed going into 2017, do we have time to evaluate an addition, you know, an option relative to this plan? And I know you participate in this, or these service cooperatives, so you've had these deliberations and the discussion coming with this recommendation to us. So that's the one thing. What is our option? Because if we do nothing, we're ablegating our responsibility. And then I'll let you respond to that. But the other comment I would make is that I would agree to, you know, with, with the point, Commissioner Moore has a question. And I think to the board to be informed, the best thing is for you to come back with best practices and recommendations. This is how others have done it and this is what they've learned from that experience and why it works well and so that we can make that decision in a context.
I'd be happy to research that and bring that back again. I'd be happy to follow best practices, whatever they are. At this point, I don't know what they are. I just don't want to saddle this group with mandates on how they're gonna function. But the hope is that we have a good dialogue and a good conversation. And in answer to, do we have an option? I, I don't believe we have an option. I, I, there's, there's no reason for the bargaining units to come back to the table to renegotiate a different level of benefit.
It's the provider. It's the provider to that.
And, and the timeframe for, for, for requesting a renewal, we don't have. And the timeframe for requesting a renewal, we don't have the time, we don't have the time left in the year to do that.
Madam Chair, Jeff, it might be beneficial, given our responsibility to respond to this and take action, that if we could get some information that would help inform where we are at. You did say, you know, how we compare Pine County and others as to our position relative to the Grand Array, and that has to be a context to help give us some sense of comfort as to how this is. The most difficult, as soon as we get a report that tells us what our increase is going to be in benefits, everybody gets on the phone and says, are you kidding me? What are you doing? You know? And it's just, it's something that we've talked about in the Budget Committee. It's very frustrating. But if we need more context to try to show that these numbers, this is the best we could do, you know, given your participation in the Northeast Service Cooperative and-
Doing the past practice of this board to authorize the renewal offer that was given by the Northeast Service Cooperative, I've had this for about a week.
Yeah.
We have to have this back by October 15th, and we missed the deadline to renew our staff, and we don't have a plan in place, and we're a breach of contract. This is, this is one of those things in human resources that has to be researched 18 months out for anybody to have an opportunity to change things, unless they're a private employer and they have the ability on the fly to change the benefit level without the input of staff.
Madam Chair, can we not take the benefit level that we have and say, this is our requirement when we have a request for a proposal? And we stipulate that, and then we have providers that provide that level of service that give us the price. And if we have a deadline that we can meet, but we're able to inform that by sending that out and then move on that prior to that deadline, then that might satisfy-
And that timeframe has passed. That's why I'm saying that's about an 18-month process. To want to do something like that is to plan ahead and draft an RFP. Just simply to take this plan design and shop it around and ask somebody else if they can give us a better price does not meet the requirements for shopping. It does not, it could represent breach of contract.
Well, again, the state statute that I referenced when we were looking at this before has speaks to that issue that we cannot compromise what we've agreed to in the level of what we provide. But again, I guess I'm just asking, you know, to-
Commissioner Gamo, when you did our union negotiations, we were warned about this. We had discussions about the health plan. We had a discussion about the 49er unit coming in and giving us a quote, and we knew that for 2017, we would have to be where we are, and the earliest would be 2018 for a change. And that is what we did with all three unions. So I understand the frustration, and during our union negotiations, I was frustrated then that it wasn't going to change for 2017 without even knowing that the increase was going to be this high. I knew that at that point, we had no time to change where we're at. And at that time, the unions were under the understanding that this is where we're going to be for 2017.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that, you know, Madam Chair. It just given, you know, and expressed concern by a commissioner that if we have, if we have time, you know, meeting subsequent to our deadline-
We don't.
Where we could provide some of that context. I would say that you did provide context in relationship to counties and city. I think the difficult thing is it's just, it's hard to take. It's just hard to take, and you want to say no, but we have an obligation.
I understand that. I understand that a $300,000 increase represents a significant challenge to this county's budget.
It's seriously less expensive than being sued by three-quarters of our staff.
Yeah, we're not saying we're not going to do it. I'll, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the annual renewal of the CDHP 31 Health Plan with Northeast Service Cooperative, with the understanding that we're going to really work at this.
I'll second that. Commissioner Severson, seconds. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Commissioner Mo opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item on the agenda is the approval of a staff person to fill the YMCA custodial position. Tanner Hoskins will start at A11-2, Step 1, anticipated start date, and actually, it's going to confirm as a start date, 9/26/16.
Okay, we'll start with discussion. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no questions. I'm excited that this is happening.
Commissioner Mo?
No questions.
Commissioner Gamo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two clarifications. One, when we discussed this at the outset, that we were going to do this, and certainly we've been mindful of the additional responsibility on our man, Mr. Brian, in this regard. And so we made a motion as a board to hire this individual with the understanding that the monies for this individual would come out of our committed amount to, in support of the Y. And the other thing for clarification, I'm assuming that this individual is under the direction of our man, Inspector Brian.
That's correct.
Commissioner Sterling?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no questions. I'm ready to support and make a motion that the board approve the hiring of Tanner Hoskins for the YMCA custodial position at A11-2, Step 1, anticipated start date, 9/26/16.
May I get a second?
Support.
Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor? Motion passes.
Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda is approving the hiring of Land Commissioner Parks and Trails Director Lisa Kerr at the C42-2, Step 2.
Commissioner Sterling?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I guess ahead of time, I'd like to kind of know the background, so I don't want you to go into a lot of detail, but how many applied for the job? What kind of background does she have for this?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. Commissioner Mo, would you provide some background? You were involved in the interview team for that position.
Yeah. Thank you, Jeff. Commissioner Sterling, thank you for your question. There weren't as many as we'd hoped to apply, however, and I voiced that concern with Jeff, but he said, let's interview them and see. And I was happy with two applicants we had as far as qualifications. And the recommendation from that Hiring Committee for Lisa is very enthusiastic. I was extremely impressed with not only her qualifications, but her ability to grasp the challenges that that job was going to face. So her knowledge of Parks and Trails and specifically the land commissioner, her ability to hit the ground running, actually doing what we need to do with that part of this job.
She had the training.
Yeah. And also, she's shown through her work here, her ability to take on tasks and get them done well in a timely fashion. This job is going to need both somebody who has some independence, but I think also someone who can work on a schedule and knows what it takes to get things done when they need to get done. So I was honestly somewhat skeptical going into the interview, and she really won me over strongly. And this is an area that, as you know, I worked with you on this, and this is something that a lot of people in this community put a lot of time and attention into making sure that we got right. And I can say without reservation that I think we have somebody that can really move this forward for us.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Chair, I should just answer one other anticipated question. And I'm sorry, we would not transition her out of her current position into that position and leave the Assessors' Office high and dry. We will take an opportunity to make a transition that works for both departments. But we do have some land commissioner things and some parks things, so there will be a shared responsibility going forward. But we will, we will transition as we can without leaving any department without.
So is that why this motion does not include posting for the Assessors' Office?
We already did that.
For the one move?
We did.
Removing a lot of desks around in there.
We are. And we made it, we have a posting active for Assessors' Appraiser, Residential Appraiser. And this all happened while I was at AMC. So next week, I'll have to bring a recommendation after we hear from Todd, who's taking his boards today, what to do with the other position. I'm hoping that what we'll do is find enough candidates that we can potentially fill both positions. But we will have to approve the vacancy created by Lisa's position. We'll do that.
Okay. Commissioner Gamo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm assuming with our new Land Services Department that Tim was part of this.
Correct. He was on the Interview Committee.
I mean, given the fact that he's going to be the department head.
Yes, he was involved in the Interview Committee, and Commissioner Mo and her were there.
Thank you.
Tim and I kind of talked about this because we're like really excited for her to be in this position, but also worried about taking her out of the other position. And you can't, you got to do the best person possible with the smallest pool that you have, and so-
Maybe you could do Public Health and Services and work overtime.
Good. All right. Commissioner Mo?
A couple more comments. I'd like to say Lisa's a local kid. And I say kid, you know, because now that I'm 50s, everybody seems to be a kid. But so it's nice that our county is able to provide a position that she would be gainfully employed in a field that she's very excited to be in. And the other part of this that I think is exciting for us is we're going to be moving forward with the Parks and Trails Commission, and we'll bring a recommendation for that to this full board. And then that Parks and Trail Commission will make up a lot of members of the Parks and Trail Committee that was established, and will provide some direction for both the Land Services and the new Parks and Trails Director. So we're excited about moving forward with that.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm accepting all your enthusiastic support, and I'm ready to move on this. I just wanted to ask, so it sounds like the land commissioner side has really covered the Parks and Trails part. Does she have experience in Parks and Trails to bring to the table?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, she does have significant natural resources experience and a Parks and Trail user. The other primary candidate had somewhat more Parks and Trails experience, you know, so that was something we had to gauge as an Interview Committee. However, Tim has supervised, Tim Nelson has supervised Parks and Trails and divisions in previous positions, one. Two, Parks and Trails Commission will be advising this position also, as we're creating something new. And so there'll be people here at this table, plus many of the local community user groups, which will be providing some direction also.
I think the land commissioner side of it is the part that generates the revenue.
Oh, that's a really good point.
To support them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that is, that's true. Yeah.
Okay. Berdy, did you have something before making the motion?
No.
Okay, yeah, just make an eyebrow or something. Active listening. Commissioner Severson. So, did you want to make that motion?
You could go ahead and make it.
Okay. I would like to make the motion to approve the hire of Lisa Kerr to the Land Commissioner Parks and Trails Director at the C42-2, Step 2.
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Mo? Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And I know that they have us turned on, so congratulations, Lisa.
The next item, Madam Chair, Commissioners, is approve termination of a part-time employee at the Waste Management Site and to approve the posting of that position. I can provide details that we need, but essentially, we had a, what can I say?
Unexpected circumstances.
We had unexpected performance issues that we had to deal with, and this action fits our policy related to that action, to those circumstances.
We filed a county policy.
Yep.
Any further questions? Obviously, you can talk to all your staff. So we'll start with discussion. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have any questions. I am ready to support.
Commissioner Mo?
No questions.
Commissioner Gamo?
No questions.
Commissioner Sterling?
No questions, and I'll make a motion that we advertise due to the vacancy of the Waste Management Site at the Tocky Site.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So we do have a break coming, but I would like to go through employee commissioner concerns now so that all of our time after lunch is dedicated to the hiring department. Does anyone have meetings to know what updates or reports? Jan?
Jenny would want to share. I would report on the meeting yesterday, but it's just a quick.
Yeah, I would be interested in hearing about that. It's applicable.
Well, we had over 60 folks come. We had all kinds of varieties of people in the community, and I thought it was a great discussion. We broke into a couple groups wanting to discuss single-family homes versus units for people. And it was, it was great to hear everybody's idea about what affordable and all of that housing means. I think at the end of the day, we're going to move forward with more discussion about what one roof housing can do for our community. And we had interest from Habitat, from Humanity. And so he will be coming back up to meet with a group of people, and so I would encourage Commissioner Mo to look into that also. And Beth Kennedy's going to hit that up.
Okay, thank you.
Jan, would you have more to add?
Yeah, I would just say, I thank you, Jeff, for summing up our multi-unit committee. And I guess one of the interesting aspects that was brought up that I hadn't thought of before that could make a profound difference in cracking this nut is, which also adds to budget concerns, but actually creating some kind of a fund, a local fund, because fundraisers, all fundraisers are the funders were there. And I can't remember all the names and titles of the folks, but USDA-
DEED.
DEED. But anyway, they all chimed in and were impressed with our local, we want to take care of ourselves, get the job done kind of thing. They were really impressed and thought that that was pretty unusual for a community our size, that we had that much enthusiasm for working together and accomplishing great things like this. And out of that conversation, it became clear that if we actually raised funds, that that could generate and attract larger funds from funders. And that might be something to build into our future plans is to create, and actually we are, with the creation of our EDA and what they've managed to, you know, managed to create this whole, and just even approving the 175 to synergize the funding coming out of one roof housing to do the projects that we have on the table right now. So we're moving in that direction, and it just confirmed that that kind of support, that kind of commitment on the behalf of government and nonprofits and everything else to create that kind of funding will attract and synergize much larger sums of money. And there's these funds, these grants are very competitive, and they commented on how a community actually having skin in the game with their own funding is a huge competitive, not a red flag, but I guess a green flag, attractive advantage. There we go. So it was a really impressive meeting, a lot of great stuff. I think the summaries at the end were really valid at that point, being one of them. And Jeff, you probably have things to add to.
Thank you. The only thing I would add is that we have representatives from Amy Globatar's office, Nolan's office, and Franken's office. They all had staff support out there, along with the agency representatives from USDA, DEED, Minnesota Housing Development.
AEOA.
AEOA, correct.
That's amazing. That's never been done before here in Cook County.
I was sitting next to one of the gals from DHS that's coming up next week, and that was one of her comments, that she already heard about the meetings that we're having here and the people that we're bringing in here. And so she was excited to come to Cook County just to find out what we're doing to support our community. So that's pretty interesting. AMC, since some of our members cannot make- AMC, since some of our members cannot make it to AMC, I had... I'm pretty sure all of the policy committees do updates when they introduce ourselves on our policies. The other commissioners tell us where they're at with their levies. And Pennington County's at 17%, and Grant County's at 21%. The difference with them is that they are building highway departments and public health departments with that increase, paying for it on their own. Pine County was at 6.5, which I know in previous years they were much lower. And they are using some of their fund balance to meet that. Menomon, remember Jeff was with the city, not the county?
Yeah.
But Menomon, for some reason, was rawrrying that they have the highest tax for the sixth year in a row. Aitken's at 8%, Winona's at 6%. Most of them are right around that 6%. Pipestone was at 13.2%, and they do not have any projects. Stearns County is using their reserve last year and this year. Last year, they used a large chunk of their reserve to get a zero levy, and they're looking at 10% this year even with using reserves. So, I mean, they're learning the lessons that we learned. And across the board, it is benefits and out-of-home placements is hitting everybody. So that was what was said during our meeting in the room. And then we had Department of Revenue in there talking about the wonderful new regulations and recommendations and demands that are going to be on our assessor's office. And we had the discussions that we've had here. You know, your training takes a big chunk out of our time. Could you do online training? Quite a few counties asked if they could use drones to do their assessments and if they would accept that. And the Department of Revenue lady said, well, you know, we do have a training in St. Cloud. And I'm like, that's still five hours from us. And she had a look of deer in headlights. So, no, it was pretty heated conversation that we had with Department of Revenue.
St. Cloud is not more than Minnesota.
Yeah. No, so it was very interesting. They handled it very well. Very nice people, but they really didn't, yeah, really didn't understand the ramifications.
Or how far, how far Minnesota is, how big of a state it is geographically.
Right. And even for the southern to get up to the metro or Duluth or St. Cloud. And for them, they're kind of saying, how come you keep going north? What about us down here? And so it was a pretty good conversation, but it was interesting to see that we all have the same things we're rubbing together. So... Anybody else have any?
I can't remember what you're rubbing with. I'm rubbing hope. Hope, hope.
Hope and poop.
Yeah, the wish, the genie.
The wish list. Anyone else have any updates? Commissioner Seiberson, can you do radio?
Yes.
Okay, Jenny, you had another item?
And this is out of county business, but I've had some concern about the fact that we cannot get driver's license here in Cook County. And so I have discussed this with Mr. Sample at the Grand Murray Pharmacy, and he's ready to go. He's just waiting for the commissioner of licensing to give the approval, and then he will have it all set up there.
Very exciting. I just want to go that direction.
Is a nudge for us, help? Probably not. Okay, so at this time, we will take a break for lunch and be back here at 1:00. Thanks, everybody. So we are back on, and we are continuing from our break for the county board meeting. And what we are going to address at this point is the transportation's sales tax and some budget discussion with the Highway Department. Jeff, are we just turning it over to Dave, or did we not?
I just want to review what I think our options are, Madam Chair.
Okay.
We, I've gotten some feedback from the state regarding our resolution and our project list. And I have that information to share. And I know that the conversations that we've had related to this project list had to do a lot with the facilities. So what I really wanted to represent here is we have, we know that we can authorize this by resolution. We also know we can amend the list by resolution. So I'm hoping that we get some direction from the board today to determine whether we go forward with a project list that has facilities on it or a project list that doesn't have facilities on it. And you can see, basically, I'm showing, I'm showing one additional step. If we take the facilities off the list that we submit now, we would, to make them eligible for, to be funded in part by these funds, the transportation bags funds, we would have to amend the list to specifically enable certain projects. But the key proposals list really are the proposal to do a comprehensive county facility study. I know that there has been work done at the Highway Department and that options have been reviewed and that plans have been developed, but we haven't placed those plans within the context of an overall plan for capital, for buildings that the county owns. And that would be my proposal, is that we would draft an RFP and ask somebody to do that and get an idea what that would look like. That whether we have a list that authorizes facilities or not, we're still, the board is still responsible for authorizing individual projects that are on this plan as being eligible for use of this funding. So we'd still have to develop a specific list of projects, whether we have facilities or we don't have facilities. So I guess basically, that's the initial conversation is talking about this. The project list, the other information that I got, I do want to review the resolution. I know some people have made comments about specific wording in the resolution. I'd like us to review that. And then I did get some feedback from an employee at the Minnesota Department of Revenue. They are asking for, we submitted a project list without numbers on it. And they said, we need numbers, we need budget numbers on this list. So I sent them the old list with the budget numbers, and I said, does this format meet that condition? And she said, yes, that meets that condition. The other thing that we have to specify is a time period. They really don't want to leave it as open-ended as we left it. And so we have to have a conversation about that, which means, doesn't mean that we have to limit the list, but it does have, they are asking, is this a 15-year plan, a 10-year plan, a 20-year plan? Just that amount of information. So they originally authorize the tax for a period of time. And then, again, we can still go in and... What's up?
That's not consistent with the statute.
The statute says, except for taxes for operating costs, transit, or improvement, the taxes must terminate when revenues raised are sufficient to finance the project.
Right.
And so, and I'm willing to have a conversation with her. I got this email late yesterday.
Dave, what way did you mean it's not consistent?
Well, to actually have a time deadline on this would be, I mean, we have a list that is, right now, is inexhaustive. You know, it's 100 and, I don't have the exact, $180 million. Even at the very rosiest projections, that would take 120 years, I think, if I'm doing the math right on that. So, you know, so like Jeff said, the statute says that it'll be in place until the, until either the board stops it or all the projects are, all the projects have been paid for. So that's what I'm saying is that, so if you have a list, the statute could just, in my opinion, the statute could just say until these projects that are on the list are exhausted or until whatever. Instead of giving it's going to expire on January 1st, 2021, or something like that. That's what, a specific date is a...
It seems that if the, if they requirement that the project list is provided and there is a cost associated, you know, with that, for what we know at this point in time, and we've got a list that's exhaustive in nature, that the language in the statute that says that the taxes must terminate when revenues raised are sufficient to meet the project, that that opened in, meeting the other requirements with the list, with the project list, it doesn't have to be a date issue.
Right.
And I agree with that interpretation. However, I think that the intent might have been something that has a list. So that's a conversation I'm willing to go back and have with them.
Right.
And I invite you to have conversations with your...
Yeah, I'm not arguing with Jeff or anything. I'm arguing with the Department of Revenue on this, so...
So that's a clarification we have to make. They don't dislike our list once we put budget numbers on it. They did not like it without the budget numbers on it. And they, but they're saying, you know, this is open-ended, it's not intended to be open-ended. And that's, maybe it is, maybe it isn't.
But I think Dave's right. I mean, it's that must terminate when revenues raised are sufficient to finance the project. So if number is defined, you know, then it's, then it's done once that's, once those, that finite number is complete, regardless of whether, you know, how long it takes. I mean, because we don't kind of know exactly how long it is going to take.
Right. My other concern is putting the numbers on, which I've seen a number of counties that have done this resolution, and they don't have numbers on their list. So my concern is with that, and I, you know, just so that we know, so I'm upfront with everybody, these are preliminary estimates on these projects. I mean, that some of them have a lot of detail in them, some of them are a per-mile cost or something like that. So these, you know, the, you know, for instance...
Did you err on the side of being high?
I tried to, yes.
So...
But I don't have right-of-way numbers.
Even though they're preliminary, are we still okay because you have other sources coming in? And we can change it by resolution, can't we? If you find out it's much more? So we can change it.
So, I'm sorry. So what I'd like to do is, one of the conversations we have to have here is, what is our intent? Is our intent to open some, to have a wide-open project list, as Dave has presented with us? If we're comfortable with that portion, then we can do our homework and we can have a conversation with the Department of Revenue and find out if that does in fact satisfy, if there are examples of people who have done it in similar methods, then we need that information, we'll go have this conversation. If that's what we want to do, I'm happy to do that research with Dave, and we can go to the Department of Revenue and find a format that meets the intent of this board and satisfies the rule of the Department of Revenue. So that's one, that's one component of it. The second component is related to a project list with or without facilities. And as I said, I believe the process that we, that we will have to go through regardless of where we start with is to do a facility review, scope those individual projects in relation with the balance of the county facilities, develop a list of those projects. If we need to amend the transportation resolution list so that we can use some of those funds for part of the funding of any or all of those projects, then we do that. And then we still have to approve those appropriate facility projects to be budgeted for. So I was coming at it from the standpoint of, we need it all on the list, we need it all on the list. And I kept saying, we can amend the list later if we need to, which made me realize that logically, we could start without them on the list, or we could start with them on the list, and we can still get to the same place after we've done some more homework.
I think that the statute, which is the basis under which we're enabled to do this, that that should be what defines, you know, for us how we proceed. And this is the clarification we're looking for. But the component parts that are in the statute say that you can authorize this one-half percent. There isn't a timeline associated with it. It's not like you say, you need to spend it like some grant monies and things we have. You have to spend it within a certain period. So it is that if we put a list together, we need to determine whether or not we need to be putting costs associated. Given the timeline we're looking at, it seems tongue-in-cheek to put costs associated with projects that might happen 10 years down the line. And so that doesn't seem to make sense.
These are current costs, you know, based on current costs.
We can amend it and change the resolution.
That's right. So the point is, is the fact that there, we know that there isn't a timeline associated. It'll terminate at the point we don't have any more projects that could use the funding. And the other is that the board still has the opportunity to be able to amend this at any point by resolution.
Or decertify.
Or certify.
That's correct. And that's different in some cases when we're applying for grant monies or whatever. Everything has to be specific, and we can't deter from it. In this, there's a lot of flexibility, but we want to make sure that what is stated in the statute is understood clearly.
Our resolution will say that this order may remain open until, in one mistake, finally funds transportation costs to the level in which we can...
We could put that in bold.
Rub our hands together.
So that would mean that it will never go.
So in other words, it'd go on into perpetuity.
Exactly. The other thing too is, just so that the board knows, and I'm sure I've told you guys about this, but I want to make sure on these costs, figuring, estimating right-of-way costs is very time-consuming. And we've done our level best to get as far as we can, but at least, at least 80% of these do not have right-of-way costs in them. And we own, on county roads, we almost, there's almost no right-of-way. We own on state aid, I would say we own about 40, 50% probably we own right-of-way of some sort. And all, and in a lot of cases, it's insufficient right-of-way. They're just 66-foot right-of-ways. And for state aid highways, we should definitely always have 100 feet of right-of-way, 50 feet on either side of the centerline, so on that. So I think in almost all, even like Highway 8 from one of the projects is a good example. Highway 8 from Highway 12 to Highway 6, that first little mile there, which needs to get rebuilt. We have, in a lot of cases, 33 feet of right-of-way, but there's right-of-way costs. I've actually done a right-of-way estimate on that. So there's like an additional 17 on most of the parcels that we'll have to do. So even those where we actually own right-of-way, we'll probably need additional, so. And that actually has a cost associated to it. But there's a lot of roads, just because of the amount of time it takes to, it's going through and picking every single parcel and then figuring, then we calculate what the land value is per acre and then estimate how much land we need to buy from them and things like that. So it's a lot of, it's a lot of work, so it takes a lot of time.
So, Madam Chair, we are going to go through, so say we pass some form of this in a resolution. We're, you're going to make annual recommendations on how this money would be spent, just like you do now, correct? And this, and you're going to make those recommendations in consultation with now our highway, with our Highway Department Advisory Committee. And so, and I'm, at least I'm comfortable with that, that that's how, that's how this, the expenditures in this way go forward. I think the only, the questions that remain are, and I thought we'd answered this last time, but apparently we haven't, do we, are we going to include facilities in this list or not at this time? And I thought we decided no, but...
I have not heard a decision, which is why I'm asking for clarification today.
And I think that we want Dave to come in because I think that some people were undecided.
Okay. And then, so that question is still on the table. And then, and the other is then to work through the details of the resolution that, if they're... Jeff said he has some questions on the language, so...
I think we start with the resolution because that will be the easiest thing to get through, the language, and then we get to the arm wrestling of facility here and all facility.
And I would, I would say that the feedback that we got on the materials presented, there was no feedback on the resolution, which I take to mean the resolution is sufficient and in consistent with other resolutions that have enacted this. The other information that I put in here is the authorizing or the enabling statute. And then the most recent local sales and use tax bulletin, which shows the last dozen or so counties that have authorized this tax. It also includes a full list of local authorized tax, not just transportation tax, but other local authorized taxes. So you have, people are asking, well, who's done this? Well, now you know who's done this. And I've already shared with you, having talked with Matt Huggins about Lake County, they are planning on holding their public forum sometime in October or November. So they're planning on having their public hearing and logging down this road as well. Yes, if there are clarifications on the resolution, I think that's a good place to start. And then the other, the other direction that I think we need to draft, to craft this and to go back and have a conversation with DOR is facilities, no facilities, a full list like we have or a prioritized list with a specific period. We need some direction so that, we've talked about the benefits of flexibility. I agree with Dave's strategy on that, is saying everything needs work. And we've got to have a place to start. And then we've got to have a process by which we prioritize that.
So we're going to start with resolution. So we're going to start with resolution language and we're going to do roundtable. So Commissioner Story, do you have any suggested changes in language?
I was looking at what Jeff gave us today and what we had before. Is it all the same?
The, the resolution, the draft of the resolution is the same as we saw at the last meeting.
Okay.
No changes?
Just a minute. Do that right now.
Okay. Commissioner Nimble?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to go by, by paragraph that if you count 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 whereas's, 8 whereas's. Proceeds of the sales tax for transportation shall be spent only on projects listed on the Cook County Transportation Sales Tax Project List. Just clarification. The list that we submit, if this is an open-ended and projects come to mind or come up that we need to deal with, that are we limited, much like restricted funds, by if it's not identified on the list, we don't have the option to use these monies for projects that we don't know might be on the horizon in the future.
We can amend by resolution.
If we can amend by resolution, then my, my point is that that language might not necessarily have to be in there because it's the resolution that'll determine the project.
I think for the public, I would prefer that it stays on there so that the public knows that we're not adding this tax for other things.
The, the answer that I would provide is that this, this whereas.
Yeah.
Came from another county and the ones that I've read point to whatever planning document they have that they're submitting as their list. So if somebody has a 20-year transportation plan, they would put their county 20-year transportation plan instead of the list. So this is a generic naming. This is our, our resource list that's available for this.
And we might use language that says it shall be spent only on projects that didn't have it on the present transportation project list. If we say that, then we know that, that's, that's our best estimate to where we're at. I think it's important that this is clear. The other thing is that I don't think paragraph 9 that follows is, needs to be in there unless we are attending to Commissioner Mo's point, that when we have projects that are brought before us, we as a board make a decision using various funding sources.
Don't we need a public hearing?
And we don't, if we, if we're going to have a public hearing, then this should be in there. But I don't think we're going to have a public hearing. That was to establish whether or not we'd have the half percent. So I don't think paragraph 9 should be.
No, paragraph 9 is specifically if we do want to amend the list, the requirement is to have a public hearing to review the new list and then another authorizing resolution to amend the list. So that is specifically what that number 9 is for.
Then we may, we, whereas the addition of other projects or improvements to be considered.
So that's specifically.
Not identified on the list, maybe it should.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay.
This, this is wording that's in from resolutions that I've stole.
Okay. And that, that has to do with, that has to do with it a resolution made but not on the existing.
Right.
Because when I first read it, I read it as.
So that, so to modify the list, if we, if we don't have, if we, if we put together a list that doesn't have facilities on it now, we develop a plan and we say, you know, the only, the only way we're really going to be able to fund this without, without going this way on, on other debt, is to enable a portion of this to be used for those specific projects. To amend the project list requires a public hearing to consider the revised project list. And then, and then another resolution enacting the new, the new project list. So.
Maybe suggest that if you stand that with the addition of projects or improvements not identified on the submitted list, some to that language, then we, we know it pertains to things outside of what exists on the list.
But it does say other projects or improvements.
That's right.
Addition of other or improvements, it seems clear.
8, 9 are read together.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, good. Those may only two.
But so, but Gary, so your, your point is you would be much more comfortable, I mean, it doesn't, it's not a problem if it's in there, I don't think, but projects not included on the above list?
With the initial submitted list, yeah. Yeah, with the above list.
I mean, I don't.
It just says, it's very clear.
It's not a big deal if it's in there, but.
For the previously included list.
That's right. The previously included list. It's something that identifies specifically, so it's.
Or do you not know this?
No, it'll, it'll go on. You could end up doing this three or four times.
The initial submitted list?
Yeah. It just said not identified on the initial.
Is that all your recommendations?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Silverton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question about the next one.
10?
That is 10. Whereas Cook County Board desires to keep the road and bridge levy with low rather than fund these projects to property tax. I'm questioning the word low as being subjective.
That's number 7.
Okay, number 7, not number 10. And trying to link it to the kinds of projects we want to do with the levy versus the kinds of projects that we don't want to do with the levy. And I don't know, that might get too complicated. So maybe low is good enough. I just question what low means. I mean, low means something way different.
We don't want to do anything with the levy because we keep not giving the money.
When I stole Crow Wing's authorizing resolution, their line here said, the Crow Wing County Board desires to reduce the road and bridge levy by, and they put in a specific amount. They put in 1.2 million. So they were actually going to put this in place of levy that they had specified for road improvements in their county.
Okay.
I'm just saying millions.
We're going to reduce ours by 125,000 because that's the last amount we gave.
And, and not wanting to put 125,000, I put a subjective note in there because it was just, it's a placeholder.
Yeah.
So if there's a better term.
Yeah.
That's the purpose this line serves is, this is the rationale why we're doing this. Why are we using this funding mechanism instead of the other ones that are available to us?
Right. A distinctive, distinctive wording versus the law.
County Board desires to keep the road and bridge levy desirable.
Or, or put county resident appropriate, or I don't know.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know that I, Brady suggested reduce and I don't know that I, because the, the reality is, is that it's, it's going to reduce us for a while, but inflation, you know, health insurance is going to go up.
Do we always have to hear party pooper?
So, so yeah.
You could, I mean, you could easily just put in there desires to mitigate the effect of the road and bridge levy on the property tax.
Yeah, exactly. Beautiful. Yes, I like it. Yep. Yep.
Anything else? Nope, that's it. Commissioner Mo?
I, in fact, I didn't have any concerns with the language of the resolution. And in particular, um, the second to last, whereas, the addition of the other projects not included on the initial submitted list or improvement. I think that that is extremely important, given the conversation that we're going to be having because, jumping forward a little bit, if we are going to be considering large facility improvements and increases, then I think those things in and of themselves, selves should be public hearings, that people actually should see the whole plan and then, and then we should, we, and we should decide at that time. So I think that language is extremely important.
Okay. Senator, can I get a motion to approve?
I make that motion?
I was just questioning.
The motion to approve the.
Approve what?
They approve the language of.
No, I was trying to approve the resolution. That was pretty shocking.
As amended. As amended.
The, the language of the resolution, not the resolution itself.
Dang.
Yeah.
I still almost slid that in until Jan had asked a question. David, you have a question?
Yeah. We need to have a public hearing.
On 8, um, I could, I would suggest that where it says proceeds, proceeds of the sales tax for transportation shall, it should, I would think transportation, I, I would say transportation-related projects, but transportation, that could mean like cars, um, you know, or walking or bikes or something like that.
Correct.
Yeah, so anyway, so that's the only thing I would say.
Where is that now? What was it?
Paragraph 8, the 8 whereas, whereas proceeds of the sales tax for transportation shall be spent.
Oh.
And you want that changed too?
What did you change it to?
Uh, I would say transportation-related projects. To be more consistent with the statute.
Okay. And Jan, you had a question?
Um, no, I, I would agree with that. Transportation-related projects, it's fine with me because active transportation could be.
So someone's going to, so would you have, we have a motion and a second on the table?
We should read the amended, the amended language before we vote.
So, so if I were to summarize what I've heard, we've got, we've got language changes on the 7th, 8th, and 9th whereas. And the Cook County Board desires to keep the road and bridge.
Mitigate.
Desires to mitigate.
Mitigate the effect on the levy.
Desires to implement this tax in order to mitigate the effect on properties. I don't, I don't know if I can say that word, but I get what you're saying.
The levy.
The levies.
Road and bridge levy on property tax matters.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I mean, I think it's close, we should nail it. Board desires to mitigate the effect of.
Of.
Or the impact.
It's the impact.
Mitigate the impact.
On the road and bridge levy.
Of the road and bridge levy on the property tax.
Yeah.
Lisa's got it. It's exactly it.
Yeah. And then 8?
8 is proceeds of the sale of tax for transportation-related projects shall be spent only on projects listed. And is the Cook County Transportation Sales Tax Project List, is that the name of our document? Or is there another name for that document?
That's what we have on it.
That's what we can, yes. If I were, yeah, we would maybe go, if I were to actually title it project, project, it would be project list, if we were to, if list was going to be in the title. If, if right now our title says transportation sales tax projects.
So take the.
Says list.
So either, we either lowercase on the L or we can rename to projects list.
So project list.
Project list, I will rename it.
Okay.
Gotcha. Yep, we can do that.
And then in number 9, the addition.
The addition of other projects or improvements not identified on the additionally submitted.
Why don't you just do it, attorneys always do, which is in the previous sentence? After that, just put in parentheses, the project list. And the next one, you only have to say addition of projects or improvements to the project list. And then redefine it. And you don't have to say all that again.
Yeah.
So Frank, do you want to clarify your motion?
Uh, I.
Before I slide that one by?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I move that we approve the resolution language as amended.
Commissioner Nimble, do you support that? So we're not approving the resolution, we're approving the language of the resolution.
Well, we're not approving the resolution list.
We're not approving the resolution. He's just approving the language that we discussed.
Well, we'll revise the draft of the resolution.
Okay, before we prove the resolution.
Before we submit the resolution for approval.
Yep.
Okay.
And then we're going to talk about the next.
Yep, okay. Okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I try.
And this will be written up as we amend the language?
Yep.
We'll amend the language and as soon as we have a list that matches whatever this conversation is now, we'll provide those materials and get it on a future meeting list, or future meeting agenda.
Or we could approve it today if we're all in agreement.
Don't we need to have it done by the end of the month?
If we wanted to go on from January 1st.
We, we do not. Essentially, if you look at that, at the list that shows the taxes that went into effect April 1st, January 1st, October 1st, they're going in on the start-up quarters. So if we authorized this before the end of September, I would say that we would be able to start collecting January 1st.
So do you want January or April?
I'd rather see January.
Okay.
As quick as possible.
Okay.
But that still gives us next, next meeting to take action.
Okay.
Yeah. Or you can take action today. Well, let's get to it.
I, I think we need to have a phone call with the Department of Revenue to clarify some things before we take action.
Okay. I think we need to.
And back up, if I'm being Madam Chair, we got paragraph 8, 7, 6, given what we're talking, our project list. On, on 7, uh, the second line, when revenues raised are sufficient to finance eliminate the. Because it won't be a specific, it'll be open-ended.
No, it is specific.
Yeah, but the statute says that we can amend it, so with that in mind, then it doesn't have to be the.
It'll still.
Doesn't have to be the project list, it's just projects, identified projects, which can come after the fact.
Is everybody okay with changing that after we made a resolution to accept it the way it was?
Well, just, it's more encompassing of, of the intent of what we just did.
So are you wanting to change it to listed on?
6.
No, no, I just take the out of there and then it, it leaves it open for resolution. Otherwise, it refers specific to the identified projects. Well.
Are you on 6?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
To take out the word the after requires?
No.
No.
When revenues raised are sufficient to finance identified projects or improvements. You take the out of there, then it's not necessarily referring to the specific list.
The as an article is in, is in the statute.
So we need to leave it in there?
I, I don't, we don't need to. I'm saying, as far as you read that, I think that's stylistic. I think it's satisfactory in a way.
Okay.
Okay, let's just do show of hands. Who wants to leave the in? Which, ah.
I don't have a feeling on.
It's not going to affect the authority of the resolution.
Okay, can we please move on respectfully?
That's what you, in the definition of your word, is.
I have, I have two questions that I need, I need direction from the board on so that we can bring a resolution and a corresponding list that the board is ready to take action on, hopefully next week.
Okay.
Yeah. After we have this direction, then I think Dave and I need to do some homework with the Department of Revenue and follow up with this individual and make sure that we can do what we want to do. If you've got examples of people who have left it more open-ended or left numbers on, I, I liked our strategy. I think that was, that was, that portion of it was supported by this board, so. But we need the direction on the project list, whether it includes facilities or not facilities. And then do we want to submit a broad list or do we, or do we want to give it an end date like she's suggesting?
We can give it an end date and we can change it by resolution.
But if we, if we don't have to give it an end date, do we, do we want to just say we're going to enact this until this list is exhausted, which has been our strategy to this point?
I think so.
I agree.
I think we keep it open-ended. We don't know unless.
And we can always.
State comes through or some federal.
And we can make the motion pending Minister Department of Revenue review.
It'd be better not to jump through hoops down the line than it is at this point to leave the door open for us as long as we can make a resolution.
I would leave it as broad as we can if that's our intent.
I haven't heard anybody who has a concern about the length of this.
Okay.
Um, I don't think we've, I've always been poised in public hearing or anybody to me specifically. And I, and in fact, I also don't think putting numbers on, on the projects is all that important because.
They're going to change.
Yeah.
Obviously, they aren't going to be right.
I mean, you would, it would just be your best estimate now anyway.
Well, exactly that. And take a look at the numbers that he's put on projects that we know are not going to be things that are done in the first five years. Those numbers are all ready for.
Already wrong.
Plus, plus how, how quickly are we going to, are we going to, are we going to collect tax at a, at a 2% rate? Or are we going to collect tax at an 8% rate? You know, how, how quickly are we going to generate that revenue? That's the other thing too, is, is, you know, say we're going to, say we decide we're going to spend $20 million. Is, is it going to take us 10 years to get to $20 million or is it going to take us 30 years to get to $20 million? Or is it going to take us, you know, so that's the other thing with, with the date, you don't know how quickly the tax is going to get generated.
This year, the sales taxes are going to go down a bit, but that's after several years of going up, we don't know.
So is, am I hearing a consensus that Dave and I should talk to them and try to leave this as open-ended this weekend?
As they'll allow us.
Who agrees?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, Dan is good.
Then there's only other one, then there's only one other question about this.
One more question.
But, well, I, I, I have, I could go either way on this. I can completely see Frank's position on this one because, um, we haven't looked at the whole scope of our needs. And when we look at our capacity to do. And when we look at our capacity to do projects, that, that, the last time we sat here with Bruce Kimmel in June, and we looked at our capacity, this was only one funding mechanism that we were, that we were using. So.
When?
You know, it's only one portion, it's only one portion of the capacity that he demonstrated we would have over a fifteen-year period. So it isn't necessary that we would have to do it. If we have, if we have a twelve million dollar project, it's not necessary we have to use this tax to fund it. We would have the capacity to do it some other way. It would, it would tax that capacity.
But I'd prefer, if it's anything facilities related, that it came out of the sales tax.
That we, that we have the opportunity to fund at least a portion of it through sales tax. And I, and I completely see that too, yet at this point, we have not evaluated those facility needs within the light of the larger picture of the county. So either way, I'm going to recommend that we do a study, so that we have that context for all of these facilities, and we can place, if the, if the best case, if the best plan for us is to develop a new facility offsite, and I'm just saying that, does that create an opportunity for us to, to reuse the Gobo building for the purpose of, of some of our maintenance needs that are, that don't have a place to be housed right now? Right? This, I don't, I don't know, I haven't evaluated that, I'm just suggesting that moving these pieces around, we might see some efficiencies in use of space if we consider all of the uses of space and all the players at the same time.
And just to review, we had, we did have a public hearing, we've all received a lot of input on this, and I can't vouch for anybody else's input, I don't know what you've heard. But in our public hearing, we had that there was strong support for this resolution, but strong support against using it for a facility. That's what I've also been echoed constituents have echoed towards me. I think we have facility needs across our county infrastructure, we know that. And if we, I, I support us looking at our needs more broadly, and then determining the priorities based upon that assessment. This board could choose, or future board if it is, could choose, choose to add this by resolution. In so doing, we've laid out, we'll have laid out a process for that to happen, and then we could have a hearing specifically on, on highway facility.
Or revision to the list.
And, and we could, we could hear that out, what are the, you know, it's, it would be a large financial commitment, and we also have assets, you know, the Gobo building and others, that could be repurposed or be used for a future facility. I think that should all be laid out as part of a future resolution. So I would ask the board to approve the list without facilities, and then I would be supportive of it if we chose to do that. I think that would be consistent with the input that we've heard from the public.
And I've heard the same thing in the West End. Folks drive on the roads, they know where the roads are. Some of them don't even know where the facilities are, so I have to point out, you know, where they are. So I'm hearing, they really would not support facilities at this moment, until things were studied, develop a list for the projects, and that type of thing.
And that was going to be my point, is the public is making their comments based on the fact that they have no idea.
Exactly.
So, I mean, they've not been in their facilities, they're making assumptions, and so are we. You know, we're here, so we hear more, but some of us go to the facility, so we know more, but, but none of, none of us are an expert. None of the public is an expert on it. I think the experts would be the staff that use them every day, and I don't know, you know. It's a tough thing on them, but I mean, we do definitely need to have a study, so that we can educate ourselves and the public. Commissioner Campbell's had his.
Thank you, ma'am Chair. Yeah, I, a couple of statements, one is, I agree, and we've talked about this in the budget meeting, that we tend to be reactionary. When the window falls out of the building, we replace it. And, and we need, we need to take a look at, at our facilities in a broader context, that's, that's important. Last year, we asked different organizations things to, to look at the actual cost of depreciation, which means there needs to be a contribution to capital expense. So that we're more proactive than reactive when it comes to these expenses, we don't want surprises. However, I would say on, on County Engineers', you know, behalf, that looking at this has been something he probably has looked at so many times, and we have paid for studies, and we have done evaluations, which has been outside people that the board has authorized to come in and look at this and say, what's the situation? We've had discussions as boards, and we've looked at plans, and then we've looked at revised plans, and we've rethought this, we've tried to figure out, how can we do this? The reality is, we talked about it in, in Public Health and Human Services, we talked about it relative to our, our health insurance today. There are things we want to go away, because they're painful, but they won't go away, we can't ignore them. And if I were in, in this particular situation, in the County Engineers' position, everything that I've invested in this and tried, and worked with the board, and had direction from the board, and spent taxpayers' money on doing evaluations, and then to come up to the point where we need to make a decision, and we do nothing about it, it's like, what I said in, in our budget meeting, is I would want to know that you've got an alternate plan for me. If we can't fund it through this mechanism, and believe me, I understand it, people say, well, we drive the roads, I want to see these roads, we've been waiting to get the roads fixed, and we want to do that? If we can look at our, at our ability to bond or find revenues, or wait, you know, from some other revenue stream, we have to have a plan that doesn't discourage. That's true across the board for every department head. And it's frustrating enough, last year, when, when organizations came to us and said, okay, here's what we need to do to be responsible for our facilities, and we said, so we don't have any money. We still need to honor the work that's been done, and at the point, find a revenue stream. So if this board, as decision makers, can come back and say, this is the way we would approach this, which doesn't just make it go away, which is what we have to do. And I agree, we need to look at it in the broader context, but I, I think it's important to bring that out in this discussion, that there's been an awful lot of work done, that's been credible work, and we've had recommendations, and out of respect for his position, and in respect for the decision makers, he's just waiting for us to make a decision.
But we haven't had a study done on the rest of our facilities, and how.
That's true.
We've only done highway department, and I don't know, we haven't done a study on, on other possible locations, and what that cost would be, have we?
Oh, yes. You, the board hasn't seen that, we've just finished that in the last few months. But, but we did do, we, we studied, we did five options on our current site, and you all have that, you all have that report. And then we did the, if you remember last, eighteen months ago, I got authorization from the board to, to do the, to take a look at that airport site. And so that's just kind of, we finished that up in the spring, so on that, and those are, and that number is the largest of the numbers, which is why that number's on the list, is, is, I don't want to, I didn't want to hide something as, as, you know, ten million dollars when it's really twelve million dollars, or whatever it is, and, and how we go about doing it, so.
And we had, we had conversations about commissioning a study for all of the county facilities, and we would certainly put in there that we've got this much material done, and we would like you to incorporate this material rather than study that stuff again, but then place it within the context. We certainly don't want to do the same study twice. But to place it in the context of the rest of the needs is, is also what is wrong. And, and I don't think anybody's disagreeing, we know we've got an immediate need with assault Sam, assault Sam storage.
And that could be called the facility, and if it's not on the list, we wouldn't be able to.
Right.
Well, it'll come off the property tax.
Well, we, we would fund it some other way.
Right.
The one, the one thing I caution the board on it, and on that is, is that I don't know where you would put it, as our current site is configured.
Well, everything else goes in the clouds.
I know, so that's, that's the only thing, is, is to, just to let you know, whatever you decide, you decide. But, but assault storage building, did anybody drive up and look at the, look at the one I've been at? So ours is twice as big as that. And so it's probably seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars at least, probably, to build that, what we need for us. So, and to fit that on our site someplace, we have to tear down buildings or do something, and, and so it's, it's a site, on our current site, it's a site reconfiguration. So that's, that's the only thing, is, is that, that's the one thing I want to caution you on, is, 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 is on that site, to do anything, you're, you gotta move, you gotta tear down buildings and, and to get things reconfigured on that, so that's the, that's the only thing, is, is, that's just about, we've only got so much land.
We've got one building volunteering to go down on.
We've got two buildings volunteering to go down, so.
And we gave themselves down for the sand salt facility.
And we do have time on this, though they give us up until twenty twenty-two.
We do.
So we don't have, you know, dive right into it, but you have to have it on the radar.
The other thing that I'll.
You learned already that everything that we do takes five years.
Yep, well, and that's actually.
Until next year, at least.
The one thing to keep in mind too, that's the other thing I was going to say, we do have, we do have a little bit of time on salt sign. But it'll take, it'll probably take from start to move in, if we were to, if we were to choose the airport site, two years minimum to get in. And it'll take longer at our current site, because we have to, we have to build a bit, we have to tear down, just to give you an idea, even the cheapest version of that option, options, I have to tear down the fuel pumps, remove, relocate the fuel pumps, then I can start building a new building. Then once I can build that building, then I, then once that building's moved in, we can move into that new building, then we get, then we have to tear down our current building that we're in, and so it's, it's multiple staging on, on our current site.
Which makes it easier on budget. Multiple years.
Multiple years, yeah, so anyway, so that's just, although it'll take, we do have some time, it'll take a long time to develop that and get, get to a point where we can actually be operating at whatever, whatever would be decided on that, so.
It'd be like the hospital.
Yeah, it's, it's a little like, it's a little like a major, major reconstruction project on a road, is, is we will start, but it'll be a long time before we can deliver the project, so.
If we, if we were to proceed with this, board were to proceed with the facility, you're saying the airport site, you mean it's, it's sitting there right on Devil Track?
Yes.
And, and I think, you know, a site, a large highway facility right on Devil Track Lake.
No, 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 no.
It's on the airport side.
It's, it's about eight hundred feet up towards the new airport, on the airport road.
On the airport road.
Yeah.
It's also about thirty minutes from the.
That was off the Devil Track Road.
Devil Track Road.
Yeah, to the north.
It's what, did you drive it eight minutes?
It's, uh, yeah, eight to ten, yeah, something like that.
It was his time rather than mine, because I know he obeys this.
And I.
Yeah, it's eight point zero four miles.
And so, and supporting a facility, also a remote facility, I mean, there's, there's going to be expenses to, for the county, have a, have a site that's further away, I mean, there's.
Probably not, for us, actually, I could probably make a case that it'd probably be cheaper to operate out of there.
Out of there than where you're at now?
It's closer for the staff, it's closer for, I might be behind the plow truck finally in the morning when it's.
Yeah. Right now, we, for instance, one of the things is, right now, we plow against traffic in the morning, because everybody's headed to town, and we're plowing away from town. We would start, and we would start up there, and we would be plowing with everybody coming off the Devil Track, everybody coming down, 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 so there, we've thought about this, but I, I don't want to get into the huge details of it, but, and then on top of it, we do, our, our major pits are up there, so all that traffic back and forth from ours, from our current site to the pit, versus from that site to the pit, is, I mean, it's two miles, two miles to the pit.
And that's part of the la- the larger context?
Right.
Because not only does this board need to understand the choices, and the costs, and the benefits, but we need to be able to represent those to the public.
Right.
These public funds, and so we, so we need to know, we need to ask all those questions, we need to be skeptical, we need to study every option. And that's why I think we need help with, with defining that context. Yeah, and it's, it's.
And I just haven't, I mean, I just haven't had a chance to go with the board with that alternate, alternate location, and, and I think from what I've, because I've been involved in it for a year and a half, with, with the architect and things like that, and we've thinking through these options, and so I've had a chance, but I, we just finished it, and we just haven't had a chance to really go, go over that other option with the board, so. And, and certainly, we can, I agree with Jeff, that looking at that, looking at how that fits into everything is a, is a really good idea, because there's, and that helps you decide whether to use sales tax or not, because if we're going to do, my opinion is, is that if the Sheriff's Department needs to expand, that's got to come out, that's got to come from someplace, and if, if HHS needs more land, or more room, or for whatever, whether it's in addition to the courthouse or a satellite building, like a lot of counties do, you know, that's got to come out of levy, and so this would take some pressure off the levy versus that, but, you know, this is, this is on here to, this is on here as a, it's a, it's a way to fund it without putting, putting the onus on the levy, it's putting on the really the users of the, users of the highway, our highway system, so. With that, so that, that's why it's on here, so, you know, how, what we decide, and how we decide to do it, that's going to ultimately be up to the board. And we'll want to go through and, and, you know, and discuss that, make decisions, it'll be a tough decision, and it'll be a long decision, and, and then even longer to, to implement whatever we decide, so.
Commissioner Campbell's got to stand up for.
Yeah. Thank you, ma'am Chair. As I say, we've got four options as to fund this. One is, we can use revenues from half cent, we can levy for it, we can bond for it, or we can wait for some benefactor that wants to aim on a building. But those are the four options. So when, when any of these buildings we look at, we say, how are we, now that we've identified it, how are we going to finance it? I think the presentation that came from Ellers was to say, here's, here's our capacity for bonding, and our position has earned us something, and we need to be wise about that relative to, to rate and length and our ability to retire debt. But to address, you know, the bigger issue of facilities, if we don't use this mechanism, or just a component of it, we're going to have to do something, or we'll be forced, we'll be forced without options to make a decision down the road.
Twenty years is a long time. We're obviously going to do something in facilities in twenty years.
Well, it seems like we can always, we can address that when the need arises. Right now, we're saying no facilities at the moment.
Well, I, I think we need to be upfront, if of those four financing options, this potentially would be a component. We need to be upfront with people, saying, with the ability to amend by resolution and public hearing, we may use this down road, but at this point in time, we're going to apply it to the infrastructure, which is our roads. But that's, that's making an assumption that our existing facilities, as we have made, asked our department, you know, maintenance relative to windows and roof and other things, can we hold on a little bit longer? But I think we need to be upfront, so it doesn't look like a bait and switch, when it comes down the line, if we say this, but if we say, in no way we will ever use this, then we leave ourselves the other option.
We're not saying that, and we've amended that, and we've, and I, I made a motion for the existing language, you know, knowing that full well, that we're telling our constituents that this may happen, however, we are listening to them now. This is what they've asked of us now.
And we will listen to them again before we make any change, because it's saying we will have a public hearing.
Not just in part, but issue we're up front with that.
Yeah.
The one thing, if I can, if I could dovetail with Commissioner Campbell on that, is, is, you know, one of the things is, is, you know, these were on the top of the list, and that was done purposely. All, all the goofy things that people don't think about as far as being.
I'm not going to coerce you to say this is goofy.
Yeah, that you, you know, like gravel pits, nobody thinks about gravel pits, or doing inventory projects, which are, would help us immensely. Or the facilities, those were put on the li- everything is in order by road number on, on, on the list. Those were put on top on purpose, on, on my part, to be, to, so that everybody sees that this could potentially be used for this, and so that the, you know, that the public sees that. I didn't want to bury it in the middle of the list, didn't want to put it at the end of the list, it's, it's on the top of the list, because, just so that everybody saw, and I want to be transparent with, with the public on that, and so my, my concern is, if the, if it comes off, if, if we pass initially without the facilities on there. I heard a lot of complaining about the YMCA when, I wasn't here when we passed the tax, but I was here during that whole, we just passed it, and then I came, and it was all, they bait and switched us, they bait and switched us, and, and, and that's, that's my.
What was on the water levy?
I know it was, I, I agree with that, but that was the language out in the public that I heard, which I knew, knew was not right, but that was still, that was still the, the language, and, and, I'm probably getting outside my pay grade on that, but it's, I'm worried that if we would come through, have another hearing on this to add it to the list, that they'll, that they'll say, you just passed that tax, but you always knew you were going to do facilities.
That's my point.
And that's my words.
But Dave, I think the converse is really true, because I had some, a lot of the concerns originally about the, about the sales tax, and I wasn't supportive. Though the people in the district I represent, though. Though the people in the district I represent, those who were supportive mostly were because of broadband. And so, so then, then when it, when it happened, then they're like, well, what happened here?
Right.
So in this case, we're saying, we've, we've, we've had a public hearing, and in fact, we're listening to the people that came to the public hearing. And, and, and I don't know what your all constituents have said, you, I can't answer for that, I just know the ones that have spoken to me, they've said, we want it, we want this for the roads. But we're also telling them, and we're telling you, that, that this, it would be a funding mechanism in the future. If we add another public hearing and pass by resolution, um, a facility, then this could happen, this could be used for that. Um, but as we're going forward now, we're, we listen to you.
And, and one clarifying point is, that would make it, that would make it different. I'd be willing to go to the public and say, this is not a bait and switch, what we're doing is taking time to study and come up with a refined project list. Before we ask for how we're gonna fund it. And that's the only, that's the only difference, and that's, that's where my opinion changed on this last week. Is we would have the ability to refine those projects and prioritize those projects in the context of the county. And then come back and say, okay, back here, we had some generalized projects, and, and we've done more with that study. And now we've got a recommended project list, and we need to find funding mechanisms, and we think this is an appropriate funding mechanism for these specific projects. I don't see that being a bait and switch at all, I think that being, that is, that's, that's work that we have to do. Before we can approve those projects anyway, and that's work that we, that we can start, and, and I'm saying, that's something I'd like to start early. I'd like to include the cost of, of doing that study in a, in a facility bond. That we would ask the board to authorize in 2017 to address the windows and the, and the roof and other very short-term projects.
And law enforcement.
Yeah, law enforcement, we might look at that list, and I don't know, I mean, if, I know, I understand, Dave, your point. That what, the sighting of a salt sand facility would be a question, but, but, you know, I could see how that would be high on a broader. Facility list, you know, as possibly the Hovland garage, you know, I don't know. I mean, I don't wanna be parochial here, though, I mean, I understand it's, there's, there's much bigger issues than that.
Well, honestly, it's, honestly, all of our facilities are a priority for me, I mean, they're, they all have major issues.
It's your job.
Right, and so it's, you know, I don't think that's being parochial at all, it's, it's, it's an obvious concern.
Yeah.
Um, on there, but it goes with TOFTI, TOFTI's the same way, TOFTI, they're twins, and they have similar issues. Um, some have, they have similar issues and then some are bad in some ways, and so, you know, like TOFTI's got a really questionable well. Um, I guess Hovland's got sewer gas like you wouldn't even believe in the building. So it's, you know, there's all this stuff that's going on, but then they've got the same structural issues and, and things like that that are, that are going on and, and for that. So there, I, I don't see that as being parochial at all, it's certainly something that needs to get dealt with, just like all of our facilities.
But then we would also be doing it in, in all of our facilities broadly, you know, we would be talking about all the different aspects of county.
And we, when we bring it to the public hearing and we have the study done, and we have the costs figured out. We can simply lay out for the public, which way do you prefer? A change to the sales tax or property tax increase? Because we do need to do something, it's just how are we gonna do it? Chan?
I think the bonding is attractive to the extent that, that we get a very competitive rate. And we've got capacity, we do, but if, but if it distributes it, it's like your comment about incremental building construction. If we can do that, we just need to be wise, we don't want it to be a mechanism that doesn't deal with reality and pushes it down.
Bonding for capital projects is normal government function, I mean, there's, those facilities far outlast the duration of the bond usually.
And it's, I see on other boards that I'm on, that's how they're doing it, they're just, they're bonding, because that's the only way, otherwise they're gonna put it to proportionate share, and that's.
And we're not gonna be able, I wouldn't be able to save the money to buy a house outright, you gotta, you gotta get a mortgage.
Um, so my question would be, um, yes, there are other mechanisms, and I trust that this group will make it work regardless. Whether we decide facilities or not, but I do think it's not a very holistic thought to think you can just build roads. Without any thought to facilities, I mean, it takes facilities to maintain roads, it takes facilities to build roads. It takes facilities to house a highway department, I just think it's kind of absurd.
That we're not doing facilities, we're saying we need to study.
I definitely agree, we do need to study, I mean, I think we're all in agreement there, we all agree we need to study. And in the context of the whole, I think we need to study and, and before we make any decisions about any kind of facility. But I think to not have facilities on the list feels irresponsible to me.
But the same is, we, we have the facilities for all other county services, you know. But to, to think that we deliver human services without the facility upstairs of this building, I mean, it, it wouldn't happen.
Yeah, but if we were building a new facility for Public Health and Human Services, we certainly wouldn't be thinking of the levy. If we were, so in other words, if we were thinking our Public Health and Human Services needed to expand office space or something. We would be talking bonding and these other mechanisms.
Bonding.
So my question is, can you bond, can you pay for a bond through sales tax money if the bond is not, or, you know, what's being bonded?
We'd have to.
Well, that's my point!
We'd have to, but we'd have to hear it on, hear it by resolution, have a specific hearing.
Bonding is a, bonding is a financing mechanism, and the way, the, the thirty million dollar capacity that Bruce demonstrated to us. Showed us, uh, generating initially about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars a year from the sales tax. Capturing about seven hundred eighty thousand dollars from retiring debt, seven hundred thousand of retiring debt. And over the course of fifteen years, building up to an additional levy of up to three hundred thousand dollars. So if you break that down, you're looking at twenty percent of that thirty million dollars. Is on the bill of the, of ta- of new transportation tax. Twenty, no, forty percent is on the transportation tax, forty percent is on, um, the retiring debt service. That we're recapturing and using to pay towards new, new debt, and twenty percent of that is, is going to the levy to finance things that we need to. So we haven't agreed on that plan, and the group's simply saying that that's, that's the, um, that's how we demonstrated that we had that kind of capacity.
No, right, I understand that, I, I guess.
So, so you could take, you could take out a ten million dollar bond and say, X portion of this bond is gonna be paid out of these proceeds. And X portion of this bond is gonna be paid out of these proceeds.
But why would you do, I mean, what, why would you, why would you create the sales tax, transportation sales tax and have no facilities on it? But the levy then will pay for the bond.
Well, I think.
That has the facilities.
If, if I may, I think, you know, what Jeff is bringing by way of recommendation of our option here is to say that. We, we aren't ignoring the reality, we're just saying we need to be more completely informed, and we have.
Well, I agree with him.
And we have the option to be able to respond, and we're making the public aware of that, but we don't, we, we've heard the public's voice. And we're wanting to be more informed so that in the bigger context, we can respond, and we do have the option to go back and visit this. And we invite them to be part of that conversation in the public hearing.
Okay, so last week we had one definite no facility, so let's just get a show of hands. Again, how many are in support of us taking facilities off of the list? Okay, so we're still not decided, so it's still in discussion.
Well, Green and I have been for Gary.
Here's, well, here's the thing, I think, I think we need to be very clear on intention. And if it's not written in resolution or in the language of the motion, it needs to be in whoever's taking notes. So then we go back, we are very clear on what we're saying. I think it's unrealistic, as Commissioner Severson has indicated, to say that we, we can't address this issue. We have the option before us, we're just waiting to get the additional information. And David is gonna have to patiently wait while we get the rest of the act together, 'cause he's done a lot of work on this. Uh, you know, from his side of it, so I'm saying, I, I'm comfortable if we move it forward, saying, take it off. With the intent, we'll get the study that includes the, the bigger picture, and then we'll invite the public and we'll act on it. The problem we have right now is similar to in the state, with the state, you know, refurbishing the capital and building a new building. And we're sitting here in Public Health, Human Services, Transportation, and we're saying, I mean, that's a hard thing. And we're bearing some of that ripple effect in our perception as to allocation dollars.
So we have a majority of the board in agreement to remove facilities with clear understanding.
Yeah, we're all on tape here.
I know, and that's why I think it'd be clear that that's where we're at.
And I would like to ask before a vote is taken, David, what is, having been part of this conversation or whatever, which, what is your?
He's worried.
Yeah, I understand.
Um. My first and foremost is to get, get, get the tax passed, that's, that's my first, I mean, that's number one. You know, there's, if we don't, if we wouldn't pay for it with facilities, I have lots of roads that I need to build. So on the other hand, I also have facilities that are crumbling, so that, it's kinda where I'm at. With an understanding, if I could make a suggestion. In the resolution, acknowledging the fact that the facilities could be added in the future to the list, whereas. Or, or be resolved, um, I don't know, I'm sure exactly how that would do.
So that's number nine.
That could possibly be a compromise, um, while it's not on the list, it might, it may still be added. Um, I, you know, I think the, the, the biggest thing is, is, is we need to light a fire under this from our standpoint. Is because we've got, we've got issues coming up, we've got salt sand, we need, we have salt sand we need to deal with, that, that's a, that's a major problem. Um, the structural issues in the cold storage building, you know, in the wintertime, we're, we're loading up two million dollars worth of equipment in there. And if that building comes down, that would be, I honestly, I think the only thing that's holding it up are pallet racks right now. Um, our pallet racks and our sign racks, um, because the posts are actually not attached to the ground anymore. They're, they brought it completely away in some cases, and in some cases, there's holes like this big in a, in a post this wide. Um, so there's, there's our brown building that we store all our traffic control and all our road control in, and it's, you can look at it, it's like this. Um, so anyway, so we have some, we, as long as we can get everything moving ahead and we can come up. Not that this wouldn't be part of the resolution or anything like that, but at least a commitment to the board that we're gonna make a decision soon. Um, and.
So to your concern, Commissioner Gamble and Commissioner Moe, on number nine. Whereas the addition of other projects, facilities or improvements not identified on the list. So that makes it clear in resolution for you and you, and you, and the public, we're not hiding anything anywhere.
Yeah.
It's clear.
Just pretty have something on it, Dave.
He looks like he's calling a touchdown.
Maybe that answers it, but I was just thinking about, if, if there was any compromise that could be considered. 'Cause you're putting numbers on everything, if, and it was just a thought that if there are things that happen with facilities. Like a salt sand and you're not ready with, let's say, it's on the plan, the big plan, it might be on there, but maybe you're not ready to do a big bond. But if you had a certain number, smaller number, that could do some of the smaller facilities, it could be done faster. Under the sales tax.
I, I would, I would suggest honestly that we, we don't have a plan to do anything.
You don't?
Right now?
No. Just the.
But that we could have something relatively soon, whether it's a comprehensive study in a, a year and a half down the road. Or whether it's an evaluation of our, of our smaller facilities that have the most needs. We have options to do exactly that, to address the, the smaller issues, the east end, the west end, the, the buildings that are, that are standing up on the pallet racks. I, I get that, I had a poll show that was doing the same thing. It, it's, I, I went, I went to Brian after we had our, our budget meeting last week, and I said, Brian, what are the risks we'd take? If I, if I, if I say I wanna kick this down, but just one more year? Because I'm actually going to ask the board to make a commitment to do some bonding, to take care of the windows and take care of the roof. But I'm asking for one more year so I can do the study and make sure that we do all of that's, that we get it right. And he said, I don't think we're taking much of a risk by waiting one more year. And I would phrase the question now, I, I believe we probably are taking one, an additional risk by waiting one more year on those things. But will we possibly get a better, a better result if we take a look at it within the larger context?
I think we need to look at larger contexts, and I would just say that, that, you know, I ask the question because, I mean. It's, it's important for us as decision makers to know that we're listening, actively listening to our department heads. And, and I, I expressed this in the meeting previously, that if we walk away and we say no. And we, we leave a, a department head hanging, I don't, I don't think that's a good thing to do. So David said, if we could do something, you know, to the resolution, that, that would, you know. Demonstrate that we're trying to find that middle ground, and Russell with a difficult issue, I would agree with Commissioner DeKur's recommendation. And I would defer to Commissioner Mo as.
So, Dave, um, I understand your point. I, I guess I did not refer to the other, I did not think of the other places in the resolution where it listed projects. Um, I wasn't assuming those were only road projects.
Right, and what I'm.
It just says projects.
Right.
You know, and so I assumed that projects meant whatever we had on the list, whether they were facilities or roads.
Absolutely, and I, I would assume that too, but I think, I think that allows for my concern about the transparency with the public.
I agree.
I know, I know that you all are thinking that, but I also know what public opinion is not always.
Right, so.
This goes back to the voters voting for the one percent sales tax and feeling that they were a slut.
But let me say this, then, I think that, and if somebody wanted to offer an amendment, I mean, I think projects, you know. Um, could just, even the first time that it says it, projects could be, uh, roads, bridges or facilities. I mean, even when we first say it, I mean, if it's on the list, it's on the list, if it's not on the list, it's not on the list. Um, I don't have any problem with that, you know, but I just think it should be from the beginning, projects. And maybe in parentheses, roads, bridges or facilities.
Is that at point three, where it first appears?
Yeah, well, wherever it would be, I, I see it first at.
Is that three and six and nine?
If you say it at three, then projects is understood.
Yeah, so the first time it's there, you know, saying what it is.
But then why would you have it on the list?
Because we're not gonna fund it at this, we're not gonna prove it at this time.
But this makes it clear to the public.
Yeah.
That we're not hiding it, we're not putting it somewhere else.
Yeah, no, I'm glad that's in here, so I'm happy with that, it can't be on the list.
And logically then, if it's not on the first project list, I would think that Commissioner DeKur's recommendation of putting it in nine. Makes the most sense, if they're not related on the first list, put it on, put it on number nine on the, on the, on the mechanism to modify the list.
That's why I wanted it there, it wasn't for clarification of what projects means, but it was clarification of the fact that it will be presented at a public hearing.
Yeah, inclusion.
It, well.
And included in resolution.
It may, I mean, you know, this board, our future board is may.
It may or may not, but I think it's appropriate to indicate there in the ninth line where we are talking about the ability to amend the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that, that's where I would put it.
So read it, please.
The addition of other projects, facilities or improvements not identified on the first list, or how, you had other language for that area, I just summarized it. To be considered for funding by countywide sales tax for transportation, so shall be presented at a public hearing. And included in a resolution passed by the Cook County Board of Commissioners.
Would you be comfortable with that, Commissioner Mo? 'Cause it has the other components that we've been talking about that we'd agreed to, as far as accountability.
I think changing the language at three still makes it appear that we're hiding it somewhere.
And, and, and I like the fact that it ties facilities to public hearing.
Right, and that's what you're trying to.
It ties it to the mechanism.
That's what we're trying to achieve.
Really, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just thinking about the wording here, whereas the addition of other projects.
Facilities or improvements.
Of improvements, not the, to be considered by funding us, shall be presented.
It's what we've said earlier, when we said that if we, we're not saying we wouldn't address this, just if we do so, it'll be a public hearing. And we'll have information to make that decision.
Isn't, shouldn't that be may be presented?
No.
Why is it shall?
May is an option, shall is mandatory.
I know, but shall is saying that we will present more.
No, no, it's not, it's saying that if we're gonna present a new list, then the statute requires us to hold a public hearing.
Addition of other projects.
It's the addition that requires it, Commissioner Mo, if you want to add any.
Any addition shall be presented. If there isn't an addition, it's not going to, we may or may not present an addition.
Right.
Oh, it says the addition, not additional.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
When we say the project list with no facilities, that we're going to have a comprehensive study. Develop a list of projects and amend that and approve the facilities, how do we incorporate that into what we're discussing?
That is going to be a proposal that I'm gonna bring for a study and authorization for. and authorization for funds for that study, and authorization for the bonding to do the projects of the study. So those, that's what I'm saying, those will be coming probably within the next six months, where we're gonna need to do that. And then, and then we'll look at that process, but I didn't want to authorize this tax without us taking an opportunity. At the Highway Advisory Committee, we also said we're gonna develop a short list of projects with this group that we can get going on. But then we want to look at developing a highway commission so that we can do a transportation plan, so that we know how to prioritize after the first bunch of projects, right? So there's a couple of steps that, that need to be done, and they're gonna take a little bit of time, but that's, that's what they would be. A facility study, a short-term bond that deals with our most pressing physical needs and funds that study. And, and the third one would be the, the development of a, of a highway plan, transportation plan.
Can I make a motion to add facilities to whereas number nine?
So I guess I would ask-
I need a second before we have discussion.
One second.
Jan, seconded it, discussion, Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, we've made so many additions to this piece of paper.
We'll get it next week, because Wendy's gonna-
No, we'll get it before, we'll get it before next week.
Yeah.
But as soon as we get it drafted.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to, I would like to, before I support it, in the final resolution language, I want to see it out in front of me now.
We, of course, have the opportunity to amend before you approve.
Right.
Even at that point. But, but I, this, this, as soon as I get back to a computer, you can have these things based on, you're taking good notes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so now that we've beat that horse to death, we also have on the list a budget.
Did you take a vote, Madam Chair, on that?
Oh, yeah, I did. We have a motion and a second to add facilities. Any opposed?
I am opposed at this time, it doesn't mean I'll be against the resolution, I just want to see the language out in front of me.
Okay, so you're opposing adding word facility to number nine?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Stroll, you're also opposed to adding, okay, all of those in favor? All right. Were you prepared to do a budget discussion, because we're at 2:25?
Yes, if I could go get some water real quick.
I was gonna say, I would like us to take a five-minute break before you do that. No offense, but it usually takes more than 10 minutes to give us a budget review. All right, so we'll be back in five.
So why don't we go and do a budget review for the Highway Department?
Guess we're looking at some options that highly might impact budget, I guess. Hello, you.
How are you?
We are live.
Question, technical issues with this. When is it going to the website? So if I were, you know, in a remote area, I would be able to-
It's live.
So it's on there.
It's right now, you can watch it.
Oh, you can do it directly.
It's downstream, and it's on there permanently.
Yes.
And you can stop until it's on.
Yeah. Like say, for instance, say-
See, I'm gonna be in the part on like next Tuesday.
Yeah.
If I wanted to watch what's going on here live, I can, I can watch it.
I think, okay, so kind of like, say-
Yeah.
Pretty quick on it.
Yeah. But you're more technically live, you're only 18 seconds.
Yeah, actually, we will do the next piece in 20 seconds.
Let's say-
No, I doubt it, I doubt it, stay well.
We should see it, 1, 2, yeah.
Maybe you're right, it's around 10 seconds.
Well, there's a, there's a, there's a 30 seconds delay, roughly, built in.
Facilities, I'm just, I'm off the top.
So, but then, for instance, say you missed the first 10 minutes, you can go back, and even, you don't have to wait until after.
I have a message, and I don't recognize the numbers, I'm making sure there are health crises at school.
And the city meetings are the same, huh? But those, you can either go to the, you can go to Good Measure Media, or on the board of the city websites.
And Memracks.
Yep.
So that's Doc Cass, what is it?
And, and a good way to think about it, I mean, it's pretty similar to Skype or, but this is like, it's a people agnostic platform, so you don't have to have-
Specific to this.
Right.
You don't have to have anything else.
You just go to web, whatever.
Sorry, Sarah, Larry?
Yeah. Where'd you get that? Uh, Anne.
That's a multiple board?
Yeah, where it's very-
Through the people's reaction, then you gotta reach out.
Once you get out to Yellowstone, and there's a stair.
Yes.
So, it implies so much, the MCA. We could be-
Yeah, I put it on website, wirecutter.
I can't find it.
Monolacks.
Well, this is a blog.
Monolacks.
And that's how we feel we're doing.
Well, I just, I was on, uh, for a few years. Yeah.
But you recommend this as the other?
Oh, no, I haven't used anything else, but I want to, that, that website, Wirecutter, they just, they buy, like, they buy the phone, you know, just-
I'm having to, they don't know.
I know.
They be ones that are-
So I can take the side. I know, education.
I, I accept this one, because I don't want to just throw them back.
Exactly, you're taking it. Yeah, I know, so from your position, you are there to our education, so when you hear there's your chance.
Exactly, and they want you to, that we're responsible.
We heard that.
It was just a phone.
Oh, yeah, that's what I mean, and I, I would say, I, I can't, I'm, I'm still acting on it, and I feel like it's still working. But I also know that you can't fix the road, because it's like, if we don't have facility to run and keep the car going, that- Because the public doesn't necessarily envision, and that's the piece that I, I can't let my vision.
Well, I think it's-
I mean, I can't get to where really big roads are, if I just do it. But I, I, well, yes, I did, I did. And, and they, they don't say that, so I get it, I mean, I get it, and I, that's, that's why I'm fighting. But I also know that in 20 years, the lights-
How much are they?
No, but then I think you can say freaking, like, oh.
Yeah.
Then they're gonna want to-
Freaking, she said freaking, and I said, oh, fine. So I would say, oh, my God.
You know, this place, it never, I'm never surprised how often I'm surprised.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
What's that one called?
You know, we're okay. I don't, I don't know.
I just wanted to- But I said, I'm like, another one for me, so.
Yeah.
You don't think you're stealing stuff.
Well, yeah, you're not being, did you say that, though? I guess, because like, we're evil beings.
Which one do you know, I don't need to.
Well, you do, just stand in front of the mirror, it's not like you're talking to us.
Should I, like, should I paint my face in pink, and then when you-
Put on a star, and then, it's very interesting.
I'm also reminding myself, because, you know, I-
Yeah, we have different-
You just do, you know, and it's-
Minor, but it's, you know. Oh, it's that.
Oh, how did that pass on?
That very glass.
My parents pointed out very often that my- It was on today, because I said it. All right.
It was a filter.
I, I'm, yeah, my-
That implies that there's one in this.
It was not unfiltered, I was born without a filter.
You always have to start with all the pores.
The only thing I like a filter for is coffee.
She's just like, she's thinking twice.
The eggshell. What was that?
The only thing I like a filter for is my coffee. But if I get two grounds, I don't mind that. So, we're gonna come back to our meeting, and we're gonna talk about just one small part of the Highway Department's budget, rather than a whole entire budget. She's, there she is, she can push the correct button. Dad, we've started in the group, because I don't hit the right button.
I didn't choose.
Is this gonna end at three, or? We're hoping to be done by three, yeah.
Okay.
It's just all depends on how much of this the desk is on. Okay, now it's recording. Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Okay, so, we're gonna talk about capital expenditures, if you have our budget, it's attached to B. With us, so we have four items underneath there, or two items underneath that, under maintenance. The grader.
So who doesn't have a copy of the attachment B at this point?
I don't have it, but I believe.
I can make copies of attachment B, it's one page.
That'd be great, thank you.
Make two.
Two, tap that, do it.
It's in the book, right?
Should be right behind the budget.
Yeah, oh, I just left it on, I don't have it now.
Oh.
Being, yeah, 2017.
Oh, really?
This is in the attachment.
Yeah, no. I don't have it.
I didn't get this one this year, just the budget committee's doing. Oh, we're the only ones that get it. Yeah, save everybody that didn't get it work this year.
Yeah.
You're never gonna get it.
Yeah, I'm just gonna get it.
Okay.
What's that?
Thank you.
Oh, man.
Do you like a B?
I would.
I'm gonna send it, I'm gonna send it to you. Yeah, no, no, not till November.
Okay, so Brett, you have a B? Gary and Jenny, you have a B?
I do.
Okay, so let's, let Dan get going here.
Right. So grader, obviously, is a, is the big one on here. That's gonna be, that's gonna replace, that'll be our fourth grader, that will, will replace, that'll replace through our fleet, we'll wait another eight years to start again on those. On there, so that's three, we have 370 on there, and nobody knows about this except for Gary, who stopped by and saw me yesterday. We're getting refined numbers on that, that's probably gonna be in the, the actual price is gonna be 380. And plus whatever we decide to spend on a warranty, so that could be anywhere from 7,000 to 9,000 on the warranty on that. So, we're still waiting for, I don't have solid numbers, completely solid numbers on that yet. They just submitted their state bid in last week, and so they were able to give us that number. And we're still waiting for trade value on that yet, too, so we don't, we don't know for sure on, on the trade value, I was supposed to get an email today on that, so. So, yeah, so that's a grader, it's ready to go. It's really important that we keep, as we do trucks, dump trucks, and as we do graders, that we keep them as close together as possible, so that we're dealing with the same model. Cat's starting to go to M, we're buying M2s right now, and they're gonna go to M3s here shortly. So, ease of equipment, ease of parts, things like that, so we're buying parts. If I'm buying oil filters, I'm buying oil filters for all four graders instead of just one specific grader, things like that, so. On there. You know, and one of the things I want to say, too, is, is those are, those are big numbers, and you might hear from people on that. That grader costs 240, 50,000 by itself, but it's, it's front wings, or it's snow wings, it's snow fighting stuff. In there, there's Baldersons, which are that's front plates on, on front of the plow, the front of the dump truck, or front of the graders. It's things like that, we're buying walk-in rolls now, which are those wheelie things that you, if you've seen the graders running around, and that's been a huge benefit to us as far as the grader can grade and then put those, put the walk-in roll down and compact the gravel, so it locks in better, we're getting better performance out of our gravel surfaces because we're able to roll the grader, roll those and things like that. So, you know, the walk-in roll's about 32,000, all told, with the attachments and the unit and things like that. So, yeah, so there's, there's about 100,000 that we add to the grader once we buy the grader for, that are specific to the Highway Department, and, and a Highway Department usage on that. Pickup 2053, that was, if you remember, last year we went through a couple of gyrations on, on equip, capital equipment. We thought about moving, moving some stuff forward and moving some stuff back, and 2053 was one of those that we decided, we went back to our original plan on that, so the 2053 is just, it's ready to go, it's an 11-year-old, it could be a 12-year-old pickup next year on that. The single axle dump truck is the other big ticket on this, and that's, it's what I call a munich truck, a municipal truck. It's, it's a smaller dump truck, obviously, it's a single axle, not double, not, not a double axle. It's replacing 4004, which is our, I don't know if it's a 1 ton or a ton and a half pickup that we have, that we, we do, we put a plow on in the spring, or in the winter time, and then we, it really, right now, it's just got a flatbed on it, it's basically a flatbed pickup truck. It doesn't really do much duty for us during the summer, other than it, it's heavy enough to pull the skid steer and things like that around on trailers, and then it's, you know, and then just carrying signs or something like that. A single axle, the reason why we've got that in there is, is that one of the things, we, we have a use for a light-duty dump truck, especially in the springtime when we're dealing with weight-restricted roads. Because we, our, our dump trucks by themselves, especially in the spring when we still, especially when we still have our, our snow fighting gear still attached, are too heavy to even go on the weight-restricted roads, they'll bust through, so this is a lighter-duty pickup. We can maybe move a little gravel out there. If we, our, if we run our tandems out there, it's, you're just doing damage to the roads, so this will be, allow us to do a little bit of work. It's not gonna be, and then they'll fix all of, of our frosty roads, but, you know, if we need to do a little patching, things like that. It's really a better situation for dealing with, and then dealing a little bit with our, our small area. Smaller, we'll still be able to, with that, still be able to deal with our smaller area plowing. One of the things that 4004 does right now is, it plows our parking lot on that. You know, we also do like the small roads like Creechville, those little bitty roads that we're able to handle. This will have a sander on it, so it'll be able to, it'll, it'll work better on our, on our narrower roads for sanding, because it's, it's not a big giant dump truck, it's a smaller truck, so it'll have a sander on it, we can, we can sand it, things like that. So that's the, it's a, it's a little bit, it's a, it's, 4004 will be 17 years old next year. So that's the, it's a, it's a little bit, it's a, it's, four thousand four is gonna be seventeen years old next year. It's, it's rough. It needs to be replaced and, and really it's an opportunity for us to actually get the proper, proper tool for the equip, for the job, for that. So, and then the next is just a five thousand dollar hay trailer. Our hay trailer right now is kinda rickety and, and ready to go. So I'm. What's that? No, the, yeah, Lisa was just asking me on the budget on that. I just, we just got those numbers finalized from Mac on that and that's, that'll be a little bit less, it'll be about three, four thousand dollars less than, than what we're looking at right now on that. So yeah. And then the other issue is, is that we, you know, last year we had a grader. We've decided to finance that one. And, and so, you know, we're paying for last forty-six thousand or forty-six thousand dollars that we're paying for last year's grader. And that was the way to, to lessen that levy last year and go from there. And the last item is under engineering and that's a replacement of our, one of our GPS units. If you remember, last year we had a, just a data collector on there. It was about ten, a ten thousand dollar purchase, ten or, ten or fifteen thousand dollar purchase. Can't remember exactly what it was. I think it was ten. We kicked that back to next year, said we'll buy it with, because we knew, we knew that this year, last year we said next year and so now we're into next year. And we said we'll just buy that with our GPS unit. Our, the, the data collector basically up and quit on us about April. On that. And then the, the R eight is, which is the existing GPS unit, the R eight is, is starting to fail. So we either do that or we need to spend thousands of dollars to repair it and that it's not, it's, it's old enough technology that it's, that it's time for it to, time for it to get retired. On that, I think, I think that got bought in two thousand nine, I think. So it's a seven-year-old technology. So yeah, so that's kinda where we're at on having, happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Chair, Dave, just to review the equipment here. You have a maintenance schedule that's well informed. How does, last year we had, we worked with that maintenance schedule because reality was sort of saying we need to do some, something different because our experience is telling us this piece is gonna go before that piece.
Right.
And da-da-da-da.
Yep.
And so my question is relative to what's on our, our capital expenditures for twenty seventeen's budget. How, how consistent is this with your projected on your maintenance schedule?
Uh, this is, uh, this is pretty close on that, as far as dollars go, if you mean that.
As far as, as far as when you, you know, you say you were gonna get another eight years on this or whatever, it's showing that, okay, that's, we need to be looking at.
These are, these are really close on this. They're, they're about where we need to be. You know, the, the one, the one thing that was different last year was, if you remember, we, we kinda juggled that 'cause four thousand four replacement was always supposed to be this year, but we looked at it and said, four thousand four is old enough and in rough enough shape, so maybe we should do it in twenty sixteen. And then we swapped a pickup truck that we thought we could, we could move off another year. Well, we didn't do that because of financial, it was a little bit more money to do that. So we got, we're getting rid of a pickup that's a little earlier than maybe we should have, but we'll get more money for it too. That'll make a big difference on that.
And so the question is, you know, when we were looking at capital expenditures relative to building facilities and we asked the department, he had, you know, can we, could we put this off? And, and this is, the reason for my question is that if you have an informed maintenance schedule and this is, it's life, you know, cycle and now we're gonna get into more mechanical components or less, you know, reliability. That's why the maintenance schedule is what it is. So if, if we're following a maintenance schedule that's informed in that regard, still leaving room for what our, you know, experience tells us.
The, the grader, for instance, actually I would've, if I had my druthers, we would've gotten the grader, gotten rid of the grader last year. Because it's actually cost us quite a bit of money this year in the shop, this summer. So fifty, sixty, fifty-six. And that's the one thing with our schedule is, is, is part of our schedule was, was informed a little bit by the board's desires on that and trying to work with the board and still maintain our discipline on, on equipment. We're kinda seeing that, that our, our dump trucks and our, and our pickups we might be keeping, or dump trucks and our grader we might be keeping just as goes too long. And that's something we'll wanna, we'll wanna look at again. There, it seems like we're pouring money in, and it could just be because I've got my eye on it because I know we're getting rid of it next year. But it seems like the last year's service we're pouring, is when we're pouring money into them right now. So, you know, we ran into that issue with the West End grader initially because we lost the transmission in that the year before. We were supposed to get rid of it. And then, and so we, we actually held that one and did a different one. So yeah, so the grader, it wasn't a huge deal as far as equipment, but it's, it was a lot of tiki-tacky maintenance and that, we had, we had that grader down for two weeks, two weeks this summer. So.
And the other question I had is, just respectfully asking that the equipment like your GPS unit, your radios, other things like that, how do you feel that those things are, are used by staff in a way that increases its life cycle?
The GPS unit?
I'm just talking about, you know, all these different, their radios or whatever, you know.
Yeah, you know, you know, the radio, well, let's start with the GPS units. Those are, our surveying equipments are lifeblood. And, you know, for us to be able to, this year, because of the problems we were having with the R eight, this year we, we were putting off some survey work because we needed GPS out on the, on the job site. We run two GPS units. Generally, one like, one sits on construction site and the other one sits, is out surveying. It's usually the schedule. Like, we get busy and we run in both GPS units at the same time on a construction site, but, but generally that's kinda the way it works. And so this year, this year we were, we were to a point where only, we couldn't be doing any surveying because we needed to have the GPS unit on, on site on that. So that, that's a, that's a piece of equipment that, that gets used often. Seven years is probably a little long on our replacement on that. I think that maybe should get cranked up to five years on that. But that was, again, one of those budgetary things where we were trying to, trying to mitigate the budget and, and, and just pushed it, pushed it a little longer than I think it should have. Radios, that's all, that's another deal. You know, radios are radios and they're, they're expensive. But there's just electronics. It's like a, you know, a radio, a handheld radio costs about the same as a, a pretty decent laptop. So, and it probably has about the same lifespan on that. So the difference is, is instead of having two or three laptops, we've got nine handhelds and forty-two or, or not, thirty-two mobile radios on those. So, starting to, those are starting to fail on us. We've had a couple into the shop already on there. One of the things that, I, I was, I told you about this, Commissioner Gamble, but to tell the board too, is, is that we're, one of the things I've gotta get worked into our equipment schedule is, is I found out that our, our radios have been discontinued. Our current, our current radios have been discontinued and I think the board all knows that. But they're still being supported. When we were buying the new radios that you, that you authorized us to buy last year, or this summer, I mean. I was talking with the, with the service rep on getting that purchase made and he was telling us that these, our, our initial, our initial radio purchase radios are coming up at end of life. And I said, what does that mean? And he said, well, Motorola right now is still manufacturing parts for those radios, but in twenty nineteen, they're gonna quit manufacturing parts for them. So if you think about it as you've got a bin that they're putting parts in constantly, eventually they're gonna quit putting parts in and people are gonna, people are still gonna be taking bins, parts out of that bin. Eventually that bin's gonna be empty and we won't be able to repair our radios anymore. So I've gotta come up with a strategy on how we're gonna have to move our radios into the next generation. And for us, I think our radios, when we bought last time, was about a hundred and ten thousand for our radios, for the Highway Department. We are the largest user on the system. And we aren't eligible for like the search and rescue and law enforcement. They, they can get grants for that. There, there's no grants for, for highways. So highway use on that. So we're gonna have to get those worked in. And I gotta try to figure out whether to do them a year at a time and maybe a third and a third and a third, or whether it's better off to just buy them all at once so they're all the same model and that we aren't getting into, okay, I bought a third of them at this technology and then a third, and then I, then a year later I can't buy those anymore and then, so I've got another two-thirds at my, at a different technology. So I gotta, I gotta sit down and think about that a little bit. But, but that's actually one of those things that's, that's coming due and that's not in our capital plan and I need to get in our capital plan. So, on that.
Dave, on the first grader of sixty fifty-six, how old is that?
That'll be, that'll be twelve years old next year.
So how many graders do we have in the county?
We have four graders.
Four graders, okay. Now, do you trade this in or do you, what do you do with it when you wanna buy a new one? What happens with the old one?
Our first three, actually we just stockpile them. I, I just keep them at my house. I'm just kidding.
Don't say, don't say that 'cause he actually rarely ever cracks a joke with us about this. That's a good sign.
So, no, we, we do, we get rid of them. Our first three graders we took trade. We got really good trade numbers on them. When we evaluate the trade number before we make a determination of whether we wanna trade or we'll, or we'll auction. And then we do a, we do an auction. We do go through the state auction house to sell our, to sell our stuff that we do auction. We get fantastic prices for them. So.
So they go elsewhere to be.
They go elsewhere to get used.
For parts or somewhere else.
Yep. I think some of the contractors have our old graders, I think here. I know definitely we've got old, old dump trucks running around.
Well, that was my next question. How many of these pieces of equipment stay in Cook County? And, I mean, not literally how many pieces, but what I hear is, golly, I got that really nice truck from the county and I'm still running it ten years later. And it's like, well, he said he couldn't use it in the county. How come you're having it for ten years?
Well.
Well, you get the gist of it though.
Yeah, no, I get that. I think out of the last eight we sold, or seven that we sold, we kept one as a spare. It just kinda, it kinda sits and kinda does duty. But really when we get a truck that's broke, we, we can, we use it a lot. We use it, and this, this year we're using it a lot. I think five of them stayed in the county or four of them stayed in the county, I think. I don't know, I can't remember for sure on that. But some, some left and some, some went. The dealer bought one and resold it. The big, the big issue that you get is, is that people are buying these to do, people are buying these to be dump tr, or, you know, gravel. Mostly it's, it's earthwork contractors that are buying these. You know, they're running them five months of the year and they're not running full-time. We're running six months, we're running, you know, twelve months a year with our dump trucks and we're running, and we're really emergency services and we can't afford to, we don't have, we don't have a spare fleet running around and when we, when we lose trucks, it's, it affects services and so. So that's one of the deals. We're trying to get out of those, those big items and, and we also run way heavier than those, than those contractors should be running anyway. Because we're allowed to, because of, because of law, we're allowed to run heavier than is legal. Not heavier than the trucks are allowed or, or that are designed for, designed to haul, but they're, but they're heavier than what's legal on the roads and, and, you know, we're loading up with, I think empty, we're eighty thousand pounds. And then you throw twelve yards of salt sand in the back and we're pretty darn heavy when we're, when we're doing salt sand. And so, so they're, they're doing duty and, and the, the duty that the, that the local contractors are using are not nearly the duty that we're, that we're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. David, I can't remember this to finance or not to finance. I'm sure there's always a question. So we financed a grader. And we did that to meet budget demands. So why, why wouldn't we do that? I mean, it's, it's, it's a policy I'm sure that we have. Why, why would we not finance?
Yeah, and if you, if you look through your equipment plan, which I'm guessing you guys don't have, and I forgot to bring mine along, on that, one of the ways, one of the things, one of the goals in our plan, if you look at those expenditures and we're out twenty-five years, I think, twenty years, something like that. We're out to thirty, thirty-three, something like that in our plan. It's pretty consistent numbers the whole way. So we're just trying to level that so that we're somewhere between six, five fifty and six fifty annually on our, on our, our equipment replacement. And that's really so that we can, we can get a set budget number and maybe it's gonna fluctuate a little bit here and there, but it's not gonna be these wild, two million dollars and then zero and then a million dollars and then, and then zero. So we're trying to get it to that point so it's nice and level. When you push, because we have everything planned out, when you push those, that financing into those years, it, it throws those years out of whack. As far as all of a sudden it's.
Makes you look good.
Right, so, right. It makes your current year look good, but it makes, it puts pressure on those out years.
Right.
And you don't know, for instance, for instance, the grader this year went up six, six and a half or seven percent this year versus, versus last year's numbers on those. So you don't know for sure where that's gonna land. So when you're nice and consistent in there, you can absorb maybe an extra fifteen thousand dollars. It's not absorbing an extra seventy-five or a hundred thousand dollars. You know, you're absorbing that little bit on there and so that's why.
Plus there's the finance cost.
Right, and it did, yeah.
There's interest.
In addition.
You don't pay, if you pay, as you go with these things.
Right, 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 right. But the interest rates are so low. I'm just wondering.
But they're not, they're not so low on this.
Okay.
Yeah, and even, even a couple of percent or three percent or whatever it is on that. Remember what are, we financed this year?
It's right there, you have a line there.
Oh.
It was really low.
Oh, the interest. Yeah, so we paid thirty, even on that grader last year and that was, that was the used grader, right? For the demo grader? If I remember right. So we got a little bit of a deal on that. We're still paying thirty-seven hundred dollars in interest annually on that. So. On that. So, you know, over a five-year period, that's adding another eighteen thousand to the, eighteen thousand to the price.
To the overall cost. And again, it's not really solving anything except for kicking, making you look good right now and getting you.
Right.
Thing down the road. And if you consistently do that, you're gonna catch up with yourselves and you're gonna always look bad anyway. So you might as well look bad and be clear about it right there.
If we can figure out a way.
Keep looking back. Let's park in the Metro House, Dave.
Yeah. If we can figure out a way to do this, it's gonna be painful this year. But if you actually look at our expenditures, you know, you know, we give you a five-year look on our budget and where we were at on expenditures. We're pretty flat as far as expenditures go on our, on there. We've got spikes here and there on certain things. Equipment, equipment has probably the biggest spikes. But they're not huge spikes. And if you can do the pain now, the pain's gonna be really minimal hopefully unless something comes up wildly, the, the pain's gonna be a lot less next year. And the year after. It's, it's, right now we're getting to the point where we're gonna actually levy and fund our, our versus, versus using the, the reserves. So it's that tough, it's, yeah, it's ripping the Band-Aid off faster, pulling it off and increments on that. So, so that would be, that would be my pitch for, let's just bite the bullet and, and be done with it. So.
You're gonna end up paying for it anyway in overtime, just, and you're saving eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And if you were in a position, if we were different, you know, if you could save the money instead of blah, blah, but we don't save the money.
Yeah, there's always a place to spend it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, and regrettably, you know, the Highway Department's not in isolation. You know, we're, we're looking at twenty-six percent levy increase from all departments.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, I know what you're saying.
So you'd really like to look good this year by financing that grader?
I don't think it's, I think at my age it's difficult to look good no matter what. It's, it's hard to, hard to manage a difficult financial situation.
Yeah, I know.
You know, for the people who we represent. Which I know is what you're thinking about too. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Question, Dave. I'm sure you visited this, that, you know, looking at the equipment and how you acquire your equipment. We talked in the Budget Committee about financing, the advantages of financing as opposed to outright purchase and lease is the third component.
Yeah.
So what do you know in your. So what do you know in your experience in this, you know, with fellow, you know, engineers and how they establish their fleets and manage costs? A predictable cost as opposed to a managed cost. And if you look at the rental industry, they know, you know, what they can do by purchasing a vehicle. Making money on a vehicle to a certain point when they rented to public, and then selling it, and they can be profitable at it.
Right. We're we're obviously not profitable at it. I think, but one of the things I will say is is I think, I don't have these numbers memorized, so I'm going off of memory. We our last grader, I think, we sold, or is it two graders, again, we sold. We paid a hundred and seventy thousand or sixty thousand for that grader when we bought it. We got a hundred and fifteen thousand for it in trade.
Wow.
It cost us, you know, for ten years, it cost us, you know, fifty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars for that.
Did you have major replays, transmission?
No, that one that one was not, that one was not anything major on that, so on that. So, you know, we get a good return on it, part of the part of the thing that helps us is we buy on state fit. And we get prices that nobody else can touch. Just just governments can, because we're buying it such a huge amount, or it's such a huge contract that that they're getting that. Leasing, we've looked through, it really, you know, it's, again, that's that short term, long term look of things. If you look at it short term, yeah, you can maybe do it. But in the long run, it gets it gets you into, you can, if you start doing lease, 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 you can get you can get yourself dug into a pretty big hole. Pretty fast, and and, you know, that lease is not free. It's basically. It's basically financing the grader. Is basically what it is, except you pay a little bit bigger rate, a little bit higher rate on a lease. I think I think mostly because they could end up getting a turn back, and and then they they're gonna have they're gonna have equipment. That they're gonna have to repair. For instance, the grader we bought last year, we bought on, they had, there was a lease to giving before. Well, we got it back, and when we got it, the moldboard was bent. There was a big gouge in the circle, that's that piece that the that the grader blade says to that circle, circle around is a big circle. The big gouge in it and things like that, which we weren't happy with, and that's, and it gotta be used. And so, you know, that's one of the reasons we we always were hesitant to go with. Always were hesitant to go with demo equipment or used equipment, and that just reinforced our notion that. Because we take really good care of our stuff. And we we try to try to make it last as long as possible, and some, a lot of times when you're doing those, you're getting leased, you're getting leased or demoed equipment, and it's there. People don't care. So, so, yeah, so it's tough. Well, we save we save some money, but I think in the long run, it might end up costing us money for wear and tear on, because of the wear and tear that was put on the put on the grader.
Save some money in that individual instance.
Yes, yeah.
And I would represent, too, the number of of pieces of equipment that we have here. So he gave the example of the one that we ended up using for ten years, and it cost us fifty thousand dollars. We'll be leased that for ten years, it would cost you a lot more than that, because somebody's gonna make money on it.
Yeah.
They're they're not in business because they're not good at business.
Exactly.
So if that's what the cost is for that vehicle for those ten years, they're gonna make money on that in each of those years. When I was working with much smaller agencies, and we were looking at off front end loader, or we had a deal with Bobcat, where we would get a new Bobcat every year for twenty five hundred dollars, and we'd we'd buy the accessories. Well, that made sense, and that was a part of a different buying group that you had. But when you get all those number of pieces, and you look at the financing rate and the money that they need to make to be able to be in that business. The most cost effective way is for us to purchase things outright. The question, of course, is always, we got we gotta go back to that schedule and say, if we push those graders one more year, and it costs us another fifty thousand dollars, was that a good deal or a bad deal?
Right.
You know, so reevaluating the schedules is something that's incumbent on having a plan like that. And some things you can't figure out, I mean, you buy you buy a car, and that car is bulletproof until it hits two hundred thousand miles. You buy another car, and you get to thirty thousand miles, and the power steering pump goes off, you know, you can't predict that. And this equipment is significantly less reliable than your automobiles.
Really?
Coming up, they're they're going to.
Like it's sterling.
They're going to have more hands on work and maintenance, because they're.
Well, they've been used by lots of people.
They're doing very, very difficult.
Very difficult things.
Yeah.
It's like being a football player. We're being just a jogger.
You know, and the other, the other.
Different wear and tear on the equipment.
The other thing to keep in mind, too, is when you push, it's a double, it's a double whammy. So I'm gonna push a grader, so I'm gonna pay six percent more next year, three to six percent more next year for it.
There you go.
And my trade in will be less, because I just put another eight hundred or a thousand dollars on it. So, you know, we're getting rid of our graders about between eight and ten thousand hours is where we're getting rid of our graders. This one here will actually be a little less than that, so I'm hoping a little bit better trade, we'll see where it comes out at. On lower end on the hours, just because of the nature of the grader operator that that does it. He also doubles as our dozer operator during the summer, so so sometimes it doesn't doesn't run quite as much. So, so, yeah, so that it, so you kind of take that double hit on that when you when you push on that. So it's, you know, it's a little bit of a gamble.
There's your comment that we take good care of our equipment.
We do.
And when we go to buy, you know, current private sector, if we can find somebody who's taking good care of the car, we'd much rather make that investment.
We have a very good reputation on on that, and and a lot of colonies do, because they actually have full time mechanics. And 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 shops that actually take care of, most most colonies do pretty good, but we have a good reputation. Steve's an excellent mechanic, and that's that's getting a note. And people have been buying our stuff, and they they know that it's that it's quality, that it's coming out good, and we're honest. We're also very, very honest on what's wrong with it when we put it out for auction. If you ever go out, and when we go out for auction, you'll see, we put a big list on, this bumper's got a dent in it, and this this hood's got a dent in it. And we're we're very detailed, so that people can see and know know what they're buying. I don't want I don't want anybody coming back and saying, well, you never said that.
There's another element on the highway department budget, which is the calcium chloride that we talked about. That we could we could save one percent on the levy if we were to just cut that in half.
Yes, you could.
Yeah, just as a thought. It's we get more calls, depends, but.
We have more than more calls, and we would have more problems and more gravel that we have to buy and put back on the road, we've had this discussion a hundred times. But Frank Mo had to leave, and I know Jan has got another meeting, so. Yeah, so what's.
Anybody got anything else that they really wanna know?
We can call you.
Yes. I'll hear all week.
Finish your gamble, you can wash your future.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You said you're around this week?
I am, I was.